Viewers may watch TCAP's Board of Education meetings and committee meetings live or on demand at any time at tcaps.net/Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at the review approval portion of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Can we make amendment?
Yes.
I would like to add an item five after recognition for a moment of silence and reflection.
Second Beth. And that would go into item five. Everything else would go down one. Can we have, well, I guess it would be a motion to approve the agenda as amended, which will require a roll call.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
All right. Second with Beth. Stacy, please conduct a roll call.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Pat?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Humphrey?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Newman Ball?
Yes, motion carries. So moving on with the amended agenda, we are at recognition to Dr. Van Wagenen.
Yeah, so some great recognitions tonight. It's always a great opportunity when we have the chance to have our staff be recognized on a statewide level. And so tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize Brian Kay. So Brian, if you want to come up here and stand. So Brian is the principal at Traverse Heights Elementary. And Brian has been named the 2024 Michigan Elementary and Middle School Principals Association's Region 13 Principal of the Year. Eastern Elementary Principal Jonathan Swiegel's had this to say about Brian. Brian is a rising star within MEMSPA. He has taken the initiative to present at the SLI State Conference and Innovative Schools Summit in recent years. In his time at Traverse Heights, he's created an environment that families want to send their students to, and one where staff look forward to coming in each and every day. It shows in their significant growth in student count and teacher retention. I've had the pleasure of having Brian as a thought partner and as a colleague within TCAP. For each time we meet, I leave our conversations feeling motivated and excited about what's next. The future is bright for Mr. Kay, and I'm excited to see his voice be heard in years to come. And so Brian has done an excellent job as a principal. I know he's loved by the staff, the kids, and just does a phenomenal job. We're very, very thankful to have him. So we're happy. We're happy to recognize Brian with this achievement. And again, thankful to have it. So we'll have him come up if we can. We actually, we'll do it together. So let's get the next one as well. So our next one is a recognition for Sarah Decat. Sarah Decat is a West Middle School educator, and she has been named the 2025 Michigan Art Education Association's Middle Level Education Educator of the Year. So to talk a little bit about Sarah, the most awesome work she does is Kristin Studeman, our West Middle School principal.
I'll try to bring as much energy as I can. I don't know if I'm going to bring that level of thunder, but it is my absolute pleasure to recognize before the board the 2025 Michigan Art Education Association's Middle Level Educator of the Year, Sarah Decat. Sarah's unparalleled commitment to fostering creativity and skill development among her students, combined with her innovative and inclusive teaching methods, have led to numerous accolades and recognitions earned by her students, not just locally, but throughout the state as well. Among Sarah's notable accomplishments is her leadership in producing our student-run news program, West Press. Through her guidance and mentorship, Sarah has empowered students to develop essential communication skills while showcasing the varied talents within our school community. Sarah is an invaluable member of our positive behavioral intervention and supports leadership team, where her collaborative spirit and strategic insights have led to improvement in our overall school culture. It is with great pride that I congratulate Sarah on this recognition and thank her for her contributions to our entire school community.
All right, Brian, Sarah, if you'd come up, please. Yes, we'll do it. Up right over there.
Yeah. That's good. Way to go, guys. Congratulations.
And then moving on to the next, and again, congratulations, awesome awards and great things happening in our district. And moving to one of the more unfortunate things as well, is item number five, a moment of reflection. Do you want to introduce?
Yeah, whatever. You know, I don't really, you know, you never know.
I don't think it's one that any of us wanted.
In a situation like this. So obviously, you know, we just wanted to take a moment to reflect and on the tragic events from last Tuesday morning. Obviously, Mr. Kay and your staff are here. We're definitely thinking about you all and all of your colleagues, and of course, the family involved. Just, yeah, just a gut-wrenching event to unfortunately start this school year. So yeah, I mean, just wanted to take a moment to reflect and lift up the family and wrap our arms around them.
And thank you for making that motion, because it's definitely, I think it feels heavy first of all. That was one of the hardest date. Well, it still is, but. Should we, do you want to have a, should we do a 30-second? Thank you, everyone. So with that, we'll move on to the next public comment. And I take it there is a public comment. So the board is set aside this time. And for public comment, and individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak, and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process, are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Stacy?
First speaker is Grant Parsons.
Good evening. My name is Grant Parsons. Thank you for taking the time to listen. By the way, that young woman who spoke about the King's Court incident was so eloquent. She's really, the parents up there really showed themselves extremely well, I think. Tonight, I'm here. I wrote a letter to Dr. Van Wagenen a month or so ago. I'm just here because I'm not sure how to proceed. My issue, whether you got a copy of my letter and the exhibits that went with it, I'm urging the board to take action to name the Trojan Tennis Center, the Larry Nykirk Trojan Tennis Center. I haven't, I've fallen out of touch with Larry for 20 years or so, but my parents, my kids, my kids participated in the summer program. They participated in his tennis teams. I was over at the tennis courts, and I noticed the name, which I had always just somehow assumed was going to be Larry Nykirk Trojan Tennis Center, and that's not the name. I am asking you, I know you have a policy, and I discussed it in my letter, not to name facilities usually for people. And I don't disagree with that. I would note, in the past, you've named facilities for Ida Tompkins, I think Harry Running, Al Lockman Center. I think Larry Nykirk, as I explained in my page and half letter, is in that rare rank of individuals who have devoted 50 years of his life to a program. He's a Hall of Fame coach in Michigan. He is unsurpassed in his record. More importantly, he mentored kids. For one unexceptional term, I was an assistant tennis coach, which meant I drove the girls' team. And I observed the way he interacted with these young, my daughter and others, and the way they studied with their flashlights, and the way he encouraged them, and was absolutely a really brilliant person developmentally, as well as a tennis coach. He has raised $460,000 bucks over his career. He's now retired for the tennis center. He has an unexcelled record. He's a Hall of Famer. He's coached 17,000 kids during the summer programs. I think he's a real tribute to TCAP. And I think he, in the same way these other prior nominees or honorees, almost created something different in the TCAP's history. I think he deserves the naming of the tennis center. One of my daughters suggested I start a petition, one of these online petitions. I don't know how to do that. So I can do that. I would like to think that we could do it cooperatively. If you can give me any direction after reading my letter, how to proceed, I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Scott Richards.
I wish the people that are watching this by camera or in the building would look up the story of Jordan DeMaye of Marquette, Michigan. Proud young, a good young man that got mixed up and messed up. And just look at the story of Jordan DeMaye, Marquette, Michigan. These books, Red, White, and Royal Blue, Gender Queer, and All Boys Aren't Blue, they shouldn't be in our public schools, high schools. As far as I'm concerned, I've read them, and they're probably not as bad. Hustler and Penthouse probably equal these books. So please, take them out of the schools. Because all you're going to do is cause trouble for our young people. You know, they're already mixed up, going through a divorce, maybe, maybe two divorces by the time they're in high school. And it's sad, and they're confused, and I wish these books weren't in the school. The best thing I learned in my life was Sugar Time. Sugar Time was, us four grandkids would get together with my grandparents. We'd read a devotional. A devotional is a story that went with the Bible, a couple verses in the Bible. Then we'd get all, we'd pray together. Each person could pray whatever they wanted. Then we'd get up and hug each other, kiss each other. It's the best way to start the day.
Next speaker is Bill Wiener.
Bill Wiener, I drive a seat. And I'd like to just agree with what Scott said. It is a shame what's going on with these books in the libraries. I mean, you would, your faces would go red when you read what's on there. And it's just from this loophole that's in the law, that somehow, if these books were given out on the street to a student out in front here, he'd lock them up. But schools have the right, for educational purposes, to put these bad books into the library. And again, and then for them to say, we're against book banning, when TCC West, according to my estimates, you can check on tcfamily.org, shows there's 500 books on the topic of homosexuality, all positive, and not one on the other side. TC Central, 400 is zero. So the books shouldn't be in there. They're corrupting the kids. Please, at least if it's by the law, each of you seven commissioners should be taking a stand on this thing. Maybe I can't do anything about it, but it's not good for these kids and just fess up to speak out for it, to change that law. Other states don't have that law, and they don't have the books. On the TCAP sex ed curriculum, I don't know, maybe I was the only one confused, but when it said, we're having this curriculum relooked at, there were seven things listed, said read all seven of them. And from my knowledge of it, the first six, or eight of them, the first seven are all part of the policy. The eighth one, the national standards, are not officially part of the policy. Well, it's confusing. Why are they even mentioned? And the eighth, the eighth one would be, I think, confusing to parents or upsetting for third through fifth graders. Identity Trusted Adults, including Identify Trusted Adults, including parents and caregivers whom students can ask questions about gender, gender role, stereotypes, gender identity, and gender expression. If it's not part of the policy, don't even include it, or at least state outright that it's not part of the policy. I sent out over 2,000 emails concerning that sex ed curriculum, over 1,500 to educators. I plan to follow up with a link to what Audrey Werner showed. And I know some of you weren't able to watch it, but please watch it, tcfamily.org to find this information. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Jenny Walter. I am a teacher at Traverse Heights, and I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of our staff. It's been a tough, tough start, but we felt so wrapped around and so supported by the additional supports in the building, with the additional social work staff, just the kind notes and letters, and just, we really felt appreciated. And we just felt like everyone's in this together. So thank you so much for this. And thank you for considering, you know, I know the family is looking, you know, talking about bus stops, and I know that they're trying to work with us. And I think that that's exciting for, you know, a project for them. And I just really appreciate your openness to that, adjusting the bus stop up in King's Court. But most importantly, just thanks for being human and caring so much about us, because we are so lucky. We have such a great staff. But we really felt like the whole community stepped up. So thank you.
That's the last public comment.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next discussion item, oh, sorry, the next item is superintendent's report to phone to Dr. Van Wagenen.
Okay. Legislatively, not a lot of conversation. We're hearing rumblings that they may come and permanently pass a bill here in the next 30 days that would put in code the MIPSR's rollback of the percentage of that liability that we have to pay. And so we'll keep an eye on that. Also, I know Christine Thomas-Hill was in the Traverse Connect Legislative Committee, and conversations John Roth has also expressed that they have very high priority to try and do something with the supplemental on school safety and mental health. So we'll see. I had a legislative call today. And with our advocacy group for Northern Michigan, they think it's more likely in lame duck. But the problem with lame duck is a lot of priorities, lots of things with a little bit of time, and some things make it through and some don't. So we're continuing to advocate for that. We're continuing to ask our community, our teachers, our administrators, all that have an ear of any of their association personnel or legislators, to please advocate for that. You may know, obviously, all of the funds that we have for school resource officers and different security things that are district. You may know, for instance, the SRO that we have at Central High School right now, we are in the final year of a three-year grant that's paying for that half that we pay to the Traverse City Police Department. Those kind of funds are things that we use for Director of Security, that we use for these things, that we've had to now supplement other funds to do that. And so we are advocating still strongly to restore the safety and security funds, as well as to try and give some increase in the per pupil foundation, at least equal to what the charter schools received this year in that. So we're asking people to advocate for that. We will continue on our behalf, and we ask the board, any, obviously, meetings or anything you have in that opportunity, or communications, to do that, and hopefully that there's something that can help improve our budget, so that we can continue to do these things and not have to do it out of fund equity to maintain, especially as we look into next year. And then, as far as district highlights, we have, the Rotary Backpack for Kids was completed. We did find out there were over 1,122 backpacks were passed out to students across the district. I know last I talked to Robin from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Rotary, she's a Rotary, Morning Rotary group, they had a few elementary ones left last I knew, but there were none left at the secondary level. Know that Blair in Traverse Heights, every student received a backpack. So really appreciate all of the work that that group did, right here in the gym, packing all those backpacks. I know that we had some board members as well, and staff, and community members. So that was just an awesome endeavor, and we are very thankful for that. The Student Support Network, got to tell you, I had a great week last week with some donations with, I know some board members were a little bit wet shore bank, but also, you know, other grant, a regional women's group had a really strong donation as well. And as well, I know that the group that were the friends, a TCAP's yes for the bond, there were some funds left. And so they dropped off a check for over $2,000 as well to the Student Support Network. And so a really good week. Keep it coming. You know, we can use all the resources we get to help our students. The SSN just, you know, had the back-to-school pop-up event just before school started. Room right down here, we had 185 students participate and another 45 additional students after received school items. So over 200 students came in to get clothes and to get hygiene supplies and back-to-school supplies. An awesome, awesome endeavor that Katie and Ginger and her team with, put together with that. And just thankful for all of that. I know a lot of families were very thankful to have that opportunity. And then also want to thank TBA Credit Union. You know, they've done a lot to support. Not that long ago, we had a $15,000 check from them for different things across the district, but also recently, TBA Credit Union, Ally Sullivan, instructional coach at East Middle School, applied for a grant and was the recipient of a $1,000 grant from the Memic Foundation. I'm sorry, Memic with it. So between TBA Credit Union and everything with that, and Memic also is a supporter. If you don't know, Memic is an insurance company that works with AAA and does insurance for a lot of educators. And so they've been a big supporter of us. So thank Memic for their grant and all of that. So I mean, again, lots of people that are reaching out to help our kids, and we're very, very thankful for that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
And I didn't ask you this before, so sorry if I'm putting you on the spot. I think I was at one of the Shell stations the other day, and there was like a roundup for, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, we get a check from them every year, and we're able to use that for different things around the district. That's something that I use when we have a group, maybe a music group that's looking for a donation, or if we have something small that somebody doesn't have, that's something that I do utilize. We usually get about $6,000, $7,000 from the company that owns the Shells for that.
True North.
True North, yep. And so that's something that we utilize. That's something they said to me one day and asked if I'd have any interest in applying with that. And so that is something that I do when, you know, when there is a group that's trying to look for a little bit, they don't have quite enough, you know, I'm able to sprinkle a little bit of those dollars everywhere around to be able to help with that.
Do you know how long that's like going through?
I think it goes through the first of October, is when I, again, there's one pump. It's actually double-sided at each of the Shell stations within our district. And if you get gas, I think one cent of every gallon is sent into that fund, and then they send us that check. We normally get it right around the holiday time in that element. And so that's a little, again, it's helpful for me. It's just, I don't ever have any discretionary funds in that. It's a little pot that I have to be able to help out in places for groups and things that might be trying to do something to have that. So.
It adds up.
So it does. It does, yep. I was just, in fact, at the new one that they built on months ago. I saw that, so I parked there, I saw it, and so I turned my car around, and boy, it's the first pump right toward closest to the road, closest to the building.
Lead by example.
Yeah. So if anybody happens to be going to Shell, and you know, you can get five cents off with your number, and then you can give a penny to, for each gallon that goes to that fund that helps us be able to do different things for kids around the district. So lots of different opportunities. And last thing, keeping you updated on the USDA Traverse City Light and Power Energy Program. Got an email from Brandy, the CEO, today. They're still working on legalities, trying to figure that out. So no real update with that. But again, as I learn more, I'll keep you updated with that.
On the Student Support Network, isn't there also a, when is the holiday, like, winter one? Is that much later, or is it coming up sooner?
That's for the winter gear. It will be October 4th.
Third and fourth.
Third and fourth.
Okay. Right here at Glen Loomis. So they're able to be able to come and participate again with winter items.
We'll do a separate one for the holidays.
Yep, another of the back-to-school pop-up events.
Okay. Dr. Van Wagenen, I just had a question about, you know, the legislators. What's your sense of, at least the Northern Michigan legislators, do we have bipartisan support, House and Senate, to advocate for both of the?
We do. We do. You know, the, the issue's going to be is that I think there's a lot of argument that they don't have the money ongoing, that there are one-time resources that are left to maybe be able to do it. But, I'm of the argument, use the one-time resources now, then when you look at the budget next year, you know, try and figure that out. Because I just feel like safety and security, you know, mental health resources, those things, rather than some of the, you know, maybe a port term but the pork projects that have been, still infiltrate that school aid fund, that to not be able to find, you know, the money to be able to do that, I think is, is just a duty. And so, I think there are some legislators that do also feel that way. I think we've got some convincing to do with the, the executive branch in that element with some other priorities. But hopefully, they do also recognize the absolute need for that and we are encouraging them to try and even do it before lame duck. But, you know, at very least, at that point, there are, you know, they're sitting over a billion dollars in economic development funds that are sitting there that, from projects that haven't been done. So, you know, to have a priority to maybe, you know, the, I think that the community, free community college program's great and the expansion of early childhood's great, but I personally don't believe it should be down the backs of school, safety and security and mental health of our K-12 kids. And we need some folks to recognize that as well and shift a little bit of that, the funds for the general fund in priority to make that happen.
Right. And that SRO grant, it feels like it was just yesterday that a couple of us went to the city of Traverse City to advocate for that. That was a state security grant, right?
It was, it's no longer available.
Yeah, so it's not renewable.
Three-year grant, you know, at that time and so, yeah, you know, and, and obviously, that's something that, you know, we, we will want to cling on to with the grips of every nail that we have. And, you know, we've been very fortunate too to recognize that both Garfield Township and now East Bay Township is providing a community police officer, a little different than an SRO, but capacity of a sheriff's deputy at West High School and West Middle School and now East Bay Township is helping to support a deputy at East Middle School. And so, those resources are vital and we appreciate all that. But, we, we are going to struggle to maintain those things with what our primary, you know, job of educating kids is. But, I know that this board and others are going to feel like that is an absolute thing that we just cannot stand to let go. And when you're, when you're cut over 95% in that categorical, problem.
Now, I do have a question about that because I, part of my understanding was that some of the mental health and safety and security funds were federal. So, that was a one-time grant. Do you know what the breakdown was for that?
Yeah, and really, not from that standpoint, it's at the state level, a part of the, what was initially when it was done was a part of the COVID funds in that element. But, you know, what, what happened was is there was a shift in the school aid fund of about $600 million between free community college and, and expansion of GSRP. And so, you know, the, what, what we really feel like, a lot of us, is the governor really wanted to have the economic development, the SOAR fund done and that maybe 400 to 600 million dollars somewhere in there of that may have been funded through that. And when it didn't happen, it, it, it took that money in school aid to do that versus what was supposed to have be a shift of us maintaining those safety and security funds.
Okay, so it was to be maintaining what we got?
Through state dollars.
Right, okay.
And now, but now, those dollars have been dedicated towards free community college and, and the expansion of GSRP. And now, like I say, it's that, those took priority and that, that was left out. And we just, it was, it was, I was at the Capitol, I was there till 5:00 in the morning as the board knows. We were right there and we were shocked when that and any kind of increase in the foundation that, you know, we've had increases in the foundation for over a decade every year. And Northern Michigan has a big priority to bring that, 2X to bring equity, you know, in funding. And for the first time to not have that and then to have almost a complete wipeout. I'll tell you, there's a legislator from, from Wayne County that fought tooth and nail just to get a little bit to recognize that there's still even a fund for safety and security in that. Regina Weiss, the chair of the House Education Committee, I commend her, but she was sick. I mean, she was literally almost in tears, sitting there that night that it got, you know, completely, just, you know, hacked from that standpoint. And so, that's what we're trying to say, even if it's one time, give it to us this year and then start looking at some of your general fund pot that has billions of dollars that you're giving toward big corporate expansion. And let's look at the home front here a little bit and our priorities from a school standpoint.
So, what was the, so the money that we did get from the feds and you said was that, that was the COVID relief funds? What did that fund for us?
That funded, you know, that was different things, all you might remember, we had $3 million that was, you know, that we had. We had overall 17, but that did a lot with curriculum, it did a lot with all the health and safety supplies we had to purchase, all of that.
And that's mental health.
Yeah, right, and so, but the, the state used that to supplant, to do that. And then when that ran out, money had to come from somewhere else. And so, like I said, there was only so much school aid fund to go around and when they took it for community colleges and expansion of GSRP, there just wasn't enough left to fund what that needed to pick up in state revenues. And that's what was just kind of edged out at 4:30 in the morning, you know, at, at Lansing. And, you know, did, did we get, you know, more in the, the pot as far as by lowering our retirement rate? That is true, but not to the extent, if you looked at when we did our original budget and we looked at, you know, what we thought the governor's budget was and we were very conservative, as we always are. You guys all know, every year, we've gotten more money from the state than we actually budgeted. This year, after it was all said and done, being conservative, we were a half a million dollars less. You know, in that aspect and we lost a million dollars, I believe, in the safety and security money, right?
We actually had 1.9 as an allocation and we only got 190,000.
So, that gives you the idea of how much that was taken away, so. See, it's just a matter of priorities and Lansing chose the free community college and the, and the GSRP expansion over. And I sat right there and told every legislator, all the chairs, everything, I think that's a mistake. And it was, you know, I, like I said, all good other initiatives, but I just don't believe doing on the back of our K-12 kids for either of those things in that aspect to take out of the school aid fund when you have billions of dollars going towards mega, mega economic projects downstate. I just think was, you know, the wrong move, personally.
Question, what do we spend for school breakfast and lunch across the district roughly?
Yeah, I would have, I, I wouldn't have that at the top of my head, sorry.
Yeah, and that's, that's another piece that's there, but I, I will argue all day long over a free community college, you know, that.
Yeah, 40% of your people that are struggling more, you know, as opposed to 60%.
And that is another thing funded, but like I said, I, I can live with that one over, you know, honestly, a free community college aspect that, you know, and again, is that an important thing? Absolutely. And that's where, that's where my, my issue is, is I think that when you have billions of dollars in economic funds going towards big businesses to put plants in, one of them, some of them, they don't even want in their communities and, and doing that and, and when you could have supported the community college GSRV expansion with those funds and then did not do that is where, you know, I think, but I think that there's talk about that SOAR fund and maybe some shifting can happen still. It's my hope that legislators and the governor can come to an agreement to maybe shift $400 million, take that burden off the back of the school aid fund permanently and now be able to restore those safety and security funds. That is my hope and that's what I will be in Lansing, probably right before Christmas in the Capitol Building. I'm sure advocating for it, if, if not sooner.
When's the revenue estimate? When's next, when's that? Maybe, and isn't that coming up?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Because that'd be a big.
It will, yeah, from the general fund of school aid fund side, so.
I'm kind of wondering what the wisdom is in waiting until after November 5th.
You know, that's what we talked about today. From a political standpoint, why would you do that? Yeah, we don't quite understand that. There's two days left and everyone's going to Lansing. Well, we think they are going to come back and legislatively do the bill for, you know, codifying the retirement rollback, which we appreciate and also restoring a 3% healthcare subsidy that educators have been paying for retirement healthcare. But, it sure would be nice at that point and that's what we're advocating for. But, our, you know, John Roth has some hope that that happens, I think, from, you know, his side. But I'll tell you that our, our advocacy director for the Northern Michigan Legislative Group is pessimistic that there's enough work being done now to be prepared for that, you know, when it comes here that soon. So, we'll see, strange things happen in Lansing.
At 4:30 AM.
At 4:30 AM.
In the meantime, I wanted to bring up one other thing. EB2 is doing an after-hours dinner series benefiting the Student Support Network. So, I wanted to give that shout out. It looks like it's October 3rd at 6:00 PM at EB2 Vintage and Reduno's catering, so you know.
Yep, I can see that.
Very cool, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll move on to report outs, our board curriculum committee, reporting out by trustee Muma.
Yes, so our last curriculum committee meeting was August 27th. We called the meeting to order at 8:30. We, the draft committee meeting minutes remained as posted. Next procedural item was the 2024-25 TCAPS district course catalog. There was a whole list of changes. Most of those changes are those courses that are being offered by the new Compass Learning Center over at Traverse City High School. And some other changes to the catalog included additions to TCAPS Up North Virtual, some middle school offerings, courses and then also the middle school seminar, which was formerly known as advisory to align with the requirements and the pupil accounting code. Next, we moved into informational items and we had our board curriculum learning series, which Jesse Houghton, our chief academic officer for secondary and Dan Tysworth, our chief academic officer for elementary, provided an update on professional learning for 2025. So, some of those items, I'll just give an overview. AP trainings and gradings for US History Seminar, Language, Calculus, Statistics, Literature, Precalculus. Inspiring Connections was for middle school math teachers. CPM was for new math teachers. My Perspective was for middle school ELA teachers. Coding and Game Design were for high school teachers. Capturing Kids' Hearts, which is a Traverse City High School staff participated in. CKLA, Early Adapters for the ELA Curriculum Pilot and the Reading League Training for all JK through 5 teachers. Math Fluency Planning and Department Work with Scope and Sequence. And then we also had an update from Ms. Houghton and Mr. Tysworth regarding the August Professional Development Meetings that took place in, in August. So, those, some of those meetings that took place, joint principals, elementary principals, looked into Reading League, secondary principals, those new to TCAPS teacher orientation, TCAPS All Staff Welcome Back, Reading League Training JK through 5, instructional rounds and explicit instruction, 6 through 12 department sessions, Tier 1 Instructional and Professional Learning Communities, PLC launch in addition to high school teachers reflecting on 23-24 data and goals for 24-25 and planning and building connections. Then we went through various celebrations and successes. Some of those, there was Kindergarten Signing Day at all of our elementary schools. So, those would be the kids for the, if you want to really feel old, the class of 2037. So, kind of cool, like you see, you know, people signing, sports signing or going on to college to play sports. They, they did signing days at all the kindergarten, yeah, schools. Also, Fall Athletics, over 18 teams, over 700 students participating in Fall Athletics. Lots of musical and marching band practices. Actually, we can so, hear the marching band as our meeting started, I can't, I can't hear them right now. And then I won't re, or go over the Student Support Network, but the pop-up shop, that's already been covered. Community efforts around helping students, including the Traverse Bay Sunrise Rotary Club and Backpack for Kids, we already talked about that. And then had a congratulations and best wishes to Heidi Maltby Skodak on her retirement from TCAPS. And other than that, we adjourned the meeting at 8:58 and our next meeting is October 8th on Tuesday here in this room.
Okay. Any questions? There was no finance committee, that was a cancelled meeting and I will do the executive committee report out. And we went through procedure items, we did add a discussion topic on study sessions. We don't officially have the subject for October study sessions, so that is on the docket for 9E. And we also had approval of an out-of-state travel for the superintendent for conference, which is through the League of Innovative Schools and I believe subsidized by a grant for that program. So, that went on consent. As far as HR, we fully staffed at the elementary level and we did exhaust every applicant that we had to get there. So, we did exit out without any applicants, but we had filled the positions that we were looking to fill at that time. We do still have open positions for a middle school science and a high school special ed teacher as well as a few still, I think we've probably done by the time we've had this meeting of administrative moves, but maybe not quite, but.
We are.
Okay. So, at the time, we were just wrapping that up. We are obviously still looking for bus drivers, offering free CDL training, sign-on bonuses, referral bonuses, with open interviews continuing every other Wednesday. The, we obviously also have policies, which is back on the docket again tonight. Hopefully, we can close that out or at least get close to. And then from communications, we've talked a lot about some great things the district is doing, but the Sunshine Bus distributed 2,890 bags of food this year, up from 1,860 the previous year. And also distributed 3,338 basic need items. So, thanks to the Sunshine Bus Drivers, Terry and Tim and the Father Fred Foundation who helped make that happen as well as obviously Ginger and a number of the staff who, who put a lot of extra time in over the summer to make that happen. We've covered all the pop-up events and then the only other thing coming out of communications was Ginger's eagerly waiting or learning how to do safe routes to school grants and is now working with West Middle School on submitting a grant request. But that is a lengthy process and will take some time. Other than that, the, we did have a request, which was addressed earlier about the tennis facility. We did place it on the, as a discussion item. Just, if anyone didn't see the meeting, I was trying to decide if it was a little presumptuous to put it there when we're going to talk about a policy beforehand, but we can, at least it's there. Doesn't have to be acted on today, but we can at least cover some general thoughts on that. So, that was the last item, we adjourned at 4:30. Next board executive committee is October 10th at 4:00 PM. Any questions?
I just did about the safe routes to school at West Middle School. So, is that going to go from the corner of Frankie Road and Silver Lake Road down to where the, the bus route is on Frankie Road to go into West Middle School? Does anybody know?
I can help with that a little bit and to drop in.
Sure.
Probably won't be enough money to do all that, at least that's my thoughts. I think, you know, I think we're going to try and our thoughts of the crossing of Frankie Road. You know, and, and the Safe Route to Schools Grant requires that the school you're working with be at least six years?
I think it's even older than that.
Yeah, so West Middle School is the grantee for that with the Buffalo Trail going up to there. But our hope is to even just get enough funds to do what really just needs to be done right there.
A crosswalk.
Yeah, and you know, hopefully at some point, maybe some others might take a look at that connection as they redo Frankie Road. I think there's going to maybe be, need to be conversations, Tart or others might have interest in that. But, there probably is just enough funds just to probably pull that off.
So, that would help with Meyer Parking Lot to the Montessori?
Correct.
Just crossing there.
That's the plan right now, again, it has to all be agreed upon by Garfield Township. We're really still in the very beginning stages of that, but initially, at least in our conversations and walk, that's kind of the priority. And then see what might else transpire, you never know, if Township might have planned or again, Tart or whatever to combine it all. But, that's the focus we're taking into the conversation.
Okay.
Anything to add to that?
No, that's, I'm thinking you might need a, need a crossing guard for that one. Just because I know how many people.
That's something that Township has to determine, you know, by law that us fall under the Township, but yet, you know, thus and so, and finding those people and so there's a whole lot to that whole thing. There are ability for flashing lights, you know, there are solar. And so there's a whole lot to that whole thing, there are ability for flashing lights, you know, there's solar power that, you know, some things, so. We'll get into all that, but our first is we had to submit intent and that has been done. And that now engages the opportunity here, once we get official notification back from, is it the Michigan Fitness Foundation?
It is.
Yep.
It's a section of the Michigan Fitness Foundation.
And then at that point, we can start to engage with the township and others in the project.
Do you have an active PTO at Montessori?
Yes.
Would you be able to get volunteer cross crossguards, crossing guards?
No, you can't legally with the with the liability that comes with that, there has to be a training and all those elements and so. That, you know, it's highly, our our legal, I'm sure Trin would highly, highly advise us not to do that.
Alright, any other questions? Next report out is Michigan Association of Sports School Boards on August sixteenth eighteenth.
Yep, okay, so I attended the MESB Summer Institute at Tree Tops Resort in Gaylord three weeks ago. And I attended two sessions, one was on student achievement, CBA three eight one. And the other was on effective board meetings, CBA two nine seven, so I'm just gonna share a couple of key takeaways. Um for the first one on student achievement, they uh the the presenter was Tim Detweiler. And it doesn't relate to this slide just yet, but he did talk about um the importance of district culture. And supporting structure, so you've probably heard that phrase like culture eats strategy for lunch. So just talking about how organizational structure as well as reinforcing culture to support student achievement was important. Collaborative leadership between the board and the superintendent. Um, community expects leaders who are honest, transparent, civil, competent and consistently make decisions. That promote student achievement and lastly, um setting how important it is for a district to share. To set a vision and values which lead to setting goals, metrics, data and monitoring, all of which made me feel. Very proud of what we've done, particularly in the last year with our study sessions on student achievement. Um and our strategic goal three years ago, so gosh, I guess two, two years ago, we're in our third year now.
Pretty much.
So um I, you know, I think we've got the good, you know, foundation for all this. And then there was one slide that I always love looking for visual illustrations of things. Um I think most of us are visual learners and we don't absorb as much orally, so this was a really cool met- metric, I guess. You could call it um of all the different elements that go into student achievement and the graphic is really trying to show with that X. It could be any given X and that last column will will tell you what's missing, so obviously if you don't have a board. You have have a strategic loss is how they phrased it, if you didn't have a superintendent, you also would be rudderless. They called it contextual hope lacking, um if you don't have laws, you you lack focus. If you don't have family's support, you also don't, you you lose focus. So I just thought that was a cool, you know, summary to see how we all work together. And then the second um session on effective board meetings, um I don't think any of this is really surprising. But I I do always feel like sometimes the value in learning is reinforcement, you're not hearing something for the first time or that's groundbreaking. But just having that reinforcement of somebody articulating what you already know. Um just being professional, respectful, on time, everybody participating and being prepared. Aligning resources in a district such as professional development to meet district goals. Um basically, the idea of investing in our teachers as well as ourselves as a board. To um set up for success for student growth. And then there's also research they shared that shows that the tenure of a board and superintendent matters for student growth. So we've got some people in MESB that you can meet statewide who've been in office for over ten years, even twenty years. It's startling and so what they're saying is that that tenure um helps student growth and then. Lastly, I guess on the flip side, this is a negative thing, just how inefficient and poor decision making. Can com- result if a board isn't, doesn't have sufficient information um or doesn't have enough time to digest information. Uh has to act under pressure and and fails to consider long term consequences. So the flip side is, you know, defer a decision if you need more information and that also helps bring along the community in supporting something.
And wasn't there someone to know Crapids who's been on there for like thirty?
There's a fellow up and I wanna say maybe Houghton in uh the Upper Peninsula who's been around a long time and there's a guy down in Southwest. Um like Grand Haven area who twenty years, I mean, it's just really impressive. Must have grandkid, I I'm not even sure he has grandkids in the district anymore, but very impressive and very humbling to those of us who. So, oh, and lastly, the uh well, a- annual leadership conference will be October twenty fourth to twenty seventh at Lansing. Um so I think that's gonna be more on the agenda later on, but.
Yep.
That's, that always attracts hundreds of people versus these, the quarterly institutes have probably about a hundred, hundred.
Yeah, it's very large, the annual.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions about the MSB and it's October twenty fourth twenty seventh, that's right.
Thursday to a Sunday.
It's probably the reason my meeting with Dr. Ben Wagner got rearranged.
It is a busy couple of months for meetings and things going on for sure. Um board office hours, I guess I'll leave it with you, uh August twenty second, reporting out.
Yeah, so um unfortunately or fortunately for my pocketbook, I was uh without attendees. At Horizon Books on August twenty second, um so you know, I it's a great store. I did some early Christmas shopping, um I appreciate Horizon Books giving us the space to meet with the community. So just wanna, you know, stress to the community that we love making this time for you as trustees and. Um it's a rotating um monthly office hours, so come visit us and share your questions, concerns. Or um your good stories about TCAPS with us.
Well, trustee Raymond is up next on September twenty sixth, six to seven and then. I do think if we don't, we, because we've had multiple, I think, without any attendees, that we probably had to revisit it to see if there's a better way. I don't think any of us mind using our time, but we want obviously people to, if it's not convenient for people, then maybe we need to rethink.
Yeah, I'm almost surprised because we ended up with the uh study session, basically dealing with split classrooms. That people didn't come to see you uh in August.
Yeah, I'm not sure the news was out yet, it was a little too early.
So we can, we can keep it going for this, for now, for this year for sure, but then reassess if it continues to see light attendance or at least just brainstorm any ideas. Alright, um so the next uh board office hour, six to seven PM, September twenty sixth. Uh trustee Raymond uh in Horizon Books on the upper level. Uh moving on to consent, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I move the Board of Education approve the consent calendar as presented and without discussion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries, moving on to discussion items, full safety update, find Dr. Ben Wagner.
Okay. There we go, got it. Okay, um if you've been to any of our schools lately, you will have noticed large white numbers on some of the exterior doors. These numbers were installed specifically to aid first responders, helping to expedite their response times when they arrive at the school. Each number is paired with our digital criti- critical mapping software and the E nine one one emergency calling system at Central Dispatch. When all these elements work together, then they not only pinpoint the location of the call within each school, but also enable the emergency dispatcher. To guide incoming units in real time, the system ensures that responders can navigate directly to the specific location. Within the school without having to rely on school staff, thus minimizing further disruption of the student population. So you'll see on those doors, we have that, um you know, we've had a couple because we put new doors that had a really kind of porous kind of surface. That they easily peeled off when they got real hot and so we've had to replace a couple with that that are in order. But um across the district, uh we have that, we had a grant early on to do that digital mapping. So that our law enforcement officers have that right on their computer in their car um to be able to access that. Um so again, just trying to make sure that we have a consistent protocol across the entire district with that. Um and that is something that uh I know that our first responders are very eh eh happy to have the opportunity to see. And uh something that we're continuing to work on and develop based on best practice across the district, so that's what I have for you.
Alright. Uh any questions? Uh moving on to discussion item B, um the certification of Board of Education Voting Delegates for MSB Assembly. Um so as a district with five thousand to eleven thousand students, we are entitled to certify up to four voting delegates and four alternates. So everyone can be involved in this one. I guess typically what we've done is is who is likely, you have to be in person, I believe. Um if that's correct, right, you have to be in person, so I don't know if there's certain people who know for sure that they're going.
Not going, yeah.
I I was gonna start there to see if there's more than four people for sure going, um anyone else?
But it's Friday, if I had to, I could come in and then go.
It's not.
Spend it at a.
It's a Thursday.
Yes.
Is it Thursday the voting?
Yeah.
I'm very likely to be going, just my schedule never allows me to fully know until a few weeks before. I I do intend to be there and I expect to be there. Anyone else? Okay, so we're gonna have two. Beth, we we can list you, it doesn't matter if you don't, that way if you do end up being there, you're a voting delegate.
And I could just go stay someplace else that night.
No, there's no, there's no, there's no MSU home game that day, so the rates are a lot more affordable as I found out, uh trying to plan that out. Um and then.
Make sure, do make sure you get a place though, it's on Michigan Avenue in Lansing.
Yeah. It's uh and then anyone else want to be listed, if not, we will remain with the three. Okay, so I don't know if anyone would like to motion just the three names, we don't need to have the as alternates.
I move that the Board of Ed- Education certify Josie Scott and Beth as voting delegates. Uh for the Michigan Association of School Boards twenty twenty four Delegate Assembly on Thursday, October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
My second.
Second, second by Beth. Stacy, please conduct a roll call.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
And trustee Newman Bell?
Yes, motion carries. Uh next on the agenda item is the inter-district open enrollment, um deferring to Dr. Ben Wagner.
Yes, so every year um we are required to make a decision on what and if or. We want to participate in a school of choice program. And so for many years, um the, across the intermediate school district, there has been an inter-local agreement between. The five county region to have a school of choice program that just includes those districts and does not include. Uh districts outside of our intermediate school district. Um and a big uh part of that is the opportunity to make sure that all resources that are. Raised by the taxpayers in the five counties remain what the students' needs of those five counties. Um so this is that inter-district open open enrollment agreement. Um and uh so therefore, we do not participate in what's called section one oh five or section one oh five C. Of these uh state school of choice plan, in its place, we have this inter-district agreement across Northwest Education Services. And so uh I bring it before you for approval as we are required to under the agreement with Northwest Education Services each year.
Okay, any questions? But if not, uh.
Yeah, I do, I actually do, sorry, I and I know we we do this every year. But this, this pertains to our accepting open enrollment, right, so. What I, what I was wondering about was the new compass learning center, for example, with the virtual learning. Does that open up a door for us to get students?
It could.
Uh huh.
Here's the issue, is when you take students outside your ISD, you then are generally required to get permission from their sending district. And generally, they will require you to pay off special education services if you have a student from out of the ISD boundaries. So therefore, if you have a student that has a lot of needs, financially, you have that with all the resources from the other ISD. Paying for those, where when it's a kid that's for instance, they from, is for instance, from Calcasca or from Benzey or Kingsley. Those, they they get the same services from our intermediate school district, occupational therapy. Um you know, all those type of of uh itinerant services are the same, so when you go outside of our ISD, they're not the same. And therefore, then we are responsible for the cost on our taxpayers for a student that lives outside of our taxpayers, you know, area. And so that is essentially my understanding of when this agreement that's been many years ago created was created because of that issue. So, you know, it's it's a, it's a slippery slope that, you know, you, you can have students that cost over a hundred thousand dollars easily with transportation, all of it. For those services and you're going all once you do it, you you're driving all the way to maybe Cadillac to pick a kid up and bring him here. You know, to provide those services.
And it'd be our ISD that would pay for that.
We pay for it.
TCAPS would, okay, gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, Beth, you had a question?
But I thought.
Actually, sorry, Beth, right before, I'm just gonna pass the chair over to Flannoy in case she needs it, I've had like five of these since I got here and I'm.
Thank you for sharing. It was my understanding that we didn't provide transportation for them though, correct? So somebody from Kingsley.
However, correct, however, if a student's special education and written into their IEP. As a transportation requirement, we are obligated to provide that services under federal IDA law.
Okay, cuz I was kind of reading that as a a Montessori type situation.
Now, not in those situations, that's why inner inner ISD, you know, you have that and so. Um and then if it's a center-based program, whatever the ISD provides that, if the kids in Kingsley or Calcasco or Sutton's Bay or here.
Right, right, right.
They go to that center-based program, so that's why it makes sense to be within the ISD.
And then another question I had was um when we were talking about the split classrooms, approximately how many kids come? From outside of our district into some of our elementary schools?
Every building's different, you know, from that standpoint.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this year, we made some changes to the way that we did that and so unless we had a a grade with a lot of room. In some buildings, esp- in including Eastern Willow Hill and Central Grade, we did not take any.
Yeah.
At that point of out of district or even in district kids from another border, you know, area to come into that building. And the others, though, when there was room, we had a little bit ba- uh less of a gap in that because we traditionally have more room in some of the classrooms. Of our outer edge schools, we did look at that and consider, but even some of those, we choose not to at that point when we don't have room. To, you know, take, take those extra slots.
So that kind of dovetails with another que- question that I had, if they wanna come to TCAPS. Can they specify which specific school they they would?
They can make a request.
Okay.
Often, we say we don't have room here, but we do have room here if you're interested.
And then it's still their choice at that point, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
But this was the first year in those three schools, we did create, I didn't have the chance, Erica had the chance to see us go through a mission-based budget session. And be able to see the tough conversations of, okay, you know, that, you know, you don't create another section, even though you have that, you have a lot of kids on the list, they would create another one. But then you start getting three, four, five of a class in a building, you can't sustain that long term and we've had that issue. So we've made the decision to scale that down, so moving forward, we try and control those sizes. As especially as we have Central Grade, for instance, that has to move in here, we can't have it keep expanding and not have enough room, so. That is a decision we made based on feedback from board members, community, but it's gonna take a while to cycle through that, but that's the policy we plan on moving forward with each year.
And there's a couple of exceptions, um I think the staff.
And there's a couple of exceptions. Um, I think the staff, staff's children within a building.
Well, it wasn't really an exception as much. That was priority on the waitlist.
Yeah.
So when we had room, we had, we had a list of what, how we would determine who would, you know, get that. And so we had, you know, if we had staff, so let's say, I think our number was, we didn't wanna have, we wanted to make sure we had room, so I wanna say twenty-five?
Uh, we left, every grade's different, but we left a three-student buffer.
Yeah, to be able to move in from the cap, you know, of that. And so in that situation, you know, let's say we, we had twenty-one kids and we said, you know, we could take a few. We did it based on that priority list.
Right.
That we created from that standpoint.
I've just gotten some questions from parents.
Involved, did they have a sibling already in the building?
Yeah.
You know, that was chosen before because it's awfully hard when you have to split them up.
Right.
You know, and so, but we have had to have some conversations about, we're on that edge. If we take this kid, understand it does not guarantee that a sibling gets in. That following year, if we don't have room, you know, and that, that is a reality. We wanna make sure to be very upfront in those conversations. When we did have room, which was very few in those buildings, but when we did have to have that conversation, that this does not mean a guarantee for any other siblings in the future.
It's important to note too, once we accept those, they're with us for the duration. So it's not an annual selection. It's permanent ones.
Yeah.
You have a commitment to that child.
But we, but we do in other buildings and such in the outside, we do take a number of school of choice when it fits. Because obviously it's a financial, you know, gain for a district, um, in that element. And so, um, you know, we, and, and, and it tends to be those edges, you have borders of school districts, you know, versus in town. So it makes a little bit more ease and sense for them transportation-wise and those other things.
Unless they're coming from Leilina and it's over in Blair.
Correct, which would love to take some more there, but that's generally, people work in town and that element's not very often. I guess if somebody worked in Calcasco, for instance, that could be a possibility, but I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, but it's less likely. You know, you tend to get more on based on where people maybe work, easier to pick their kids up, some of those elements that they choose.
Yeah, and these may all be good questions for this study session, if that's what we end up doing. Next discussion item. Okay, all right. Do I have any other questions or motion?
I moved that the Board of Education reaffirm the action to exercise the option permitted by section one oh five of the State School Act of nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, State School Aid Act of nineteen seventy-nine is amended by Public Act three hundred of nineteen ninety-six, Senate Bill eight fifty-one, and not accept applications of non-resident students from outside the district for purposes of operating as an intermediate school district-wide schools of choice program in accordance with section one oh five for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school years, and this means to opt out of the state plan and adopt the Northwest Education Services Plan.
My second.
Second. All right, any other questions? Uh, if not, Stacy, please conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Bird?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Moonmore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Newman-Bale?
Yes, motion carries. And thank you for, that was a fun motion to make. Moving on to the next discussion item, birth of vast property update.
No real update here. Um, at this point, we're still talking, Scott already was on vacation this week. He called me late last week. Still having conversation back and forth on intent and use of property by the, the party that is, uh, interested. Um, you know, where I have had some dialogue also with Trune on possible language and deed language, some of those kind of things. So still optimistic working through the process, but it's gonna take a little bit based on, um, I did have the chance to go out and see um, the Old Norris Elementary School that, uh, this group has done before. And I think there's some possibilities to some of that stuff, but again, I think ways in which to put some deed restrictions and stuff to make sure it stays to that intent. You know, like that, um, still some work to do there, but we'll keep you updated, but still hopeful.
What are, any estimations as to a response of any sort? Or did Scott give any inclinations of further, like when conversations are gonna take place?
So, you know, they just, uh, late last week sent kind of a little detailed kind of, uh, use of property. And that, um, you know, in my mind, needs to be a little bit more detailed out, but let Scott know that um, to work with their agent, you know, in that element. Um, also, you know, it's gonna take Trune a little bit, I think, to, you know, I've talked with Gordon Van Ware and with Trune about their thoughts on, based on some of these basic ideas of what we could put into possible, you know, deed restrictions and those kind of things and conversations, their milliner on it, Trune. And Scott's gone this week, so it kind of put a pause, you know, in that. And so when he gets back next week, he's supposed to talk to that client. Um, and then I think we'll start that dialogue a little bit more deeper back and forth.
This might be more of a question for Christine Thomas Hill, cuz I think you would have been here at the time. But do either one of you know back when the Norris Elementary School was sold? Did, was this, um, I know, company the purchaser of the land or did they just become a tenant of the, of?
No, they were the purchaser.
Okay, so it really is apples-to-apples situation then?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. And then regarding the deed restriction, I know you've referenced that a few times. Could you remind us what legally can a school district do?
Well, that's what the question is.
Cuz I, I remember hearing there was pending legislation, but I thought at the moment.
It has not happened, but that was only specifically to the use of it as a school, you know, a private or parochial. You know, we do have the ability from conversations with Trune on what the intended use is and changes in the building, that those things be done. And if they're not done, that there'd be clauses of either penalties or reverter back to. You may remember when we went through the situation at, um, Interlocken School, that there was a reverter that it had to be used for educational purposes only. You know, so some kind of those things is what we're looking at. Again, just, one of the things I'm trying to work through, and it's kind of a little bit tedious, is for the neighbors that are there, the community, that everything, to make sure that it's used exactly for the intent they're telling us and it maintains that. So that doesn't become something that the board would regret ten or twenty, fifteen, twenty years down the road. And that's what I'm trying to get to with it, trying to have the buyer understand those things and have that um, and the legal language exactly. So, so I'm trying to work through right now and it's, it's a little bit of work to have everybody understand all those things, so. But, you know, right now in it, you know, they're, and the proposal is also giving a par- partial, um, to the, the township for a park in honor of birth of us and the Hoxsey family. Um, which, you know, I think the buyer is looking at as a, um, a component of the purchase price. And obviously if they didn't have to do that, that they would give more, you know, for the property. So in negotiation. So continuing to work through all that. But once I have a little bit more hopefully firm, I'll be sure to let the board know.
We're not asking them to do anything to the building in advance of a purchase, like.
That's part of the question, you know, is, is if things aren't guaranteeable through a deed restrictions. You know, do we wanna look at it of changes to the building that can still ensure the intent we want? And so, like I said, we've gotta work through those things in that element. And that's been put on the table, but then they feel it'd be less of a purchase price. And so I wanna try and get to it through the legal deed if there's a way, but if not, I'm gonna have to come out of the board and have some conversation.
Anything at all from any of the other, uh, parties that expressed an interest earlier, like?
Not really, because we haven't, once we've engaged in this and the purchase agreement that's on the table, we're trying to right now just work through this at the moment. You know, because it is more money than that at the seven hundred thousand dollar price point. It's something that's an initial conversation with at least some neighbors, we're excited about. Also, you know, it does take a, a change in zoning that Acme Township has to be agreeable to. So that's something right now Scott's also working with the potential purchaser, that, to make sure they do that before we go down that road again. Um, you know, so that needs to happen. So that's what I'm saying, that, that hasn't happened yet. So there's a little bit of time here, the things, things that need to happen before we really get down to nitty-gritty with this thing.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that property? Then we'll move on to the next discussion item, which is, uh, item E. We have a study session that we originally talked about having four. We've got, uh, three. Set up the final one of, uh, focus on, uh, each, uh, level of, of school, uh, coming up in September. But we do have October still technically unassigned. I know we've had plenty of discussions, but there's not been any official adoption of, uh, topic. So we do have that one. Um, and I did wanna get any feedback as a group of how everyone thinks they're going. I think they seem to be valuable. We had a number of suggested topics, which, you know, even moving into next year, we have to start thinking about subjects, cuz it'd be nice to get really far, like ahead on planning, but at the same time, we also have a strategic plan. I was thinking about that earlier with three-year strategic plan starts back up, so that's probably gonna be a lot of it as well. So, um, the October one I know has been floated on a financial, there's been, whether it be bond-specific, budgeting-specific, a combination of both, and I just need the board to see what it is.
I would like to, whether it be this one or one of the future ones, I would like to, um, I know we talked at one of the last ones about some of our different demographics and, and some of the planning that we have. I would like to know a little bit more about, um, what we have in place to address students that, um, are at risk. And like retention and graduation, um, rates for them. What specifically, um, is, is being done for those students?
Okay, and then I, I, that one has been a common suggestion as well from the board. And when do we start? Just for general, like we, the strategic plan would probably start around summer again, I'm guessing?
Hmm, I think before that.
Yeah.
I think probably March, April-ish would be, you know, going to last time. Um, I did have an initial conversation with Nick, uh, last week about his willingness and where he's at doing, he's gonna let me know. And he has transitioned some of that to some other staff at the ISD, but now the board was really excited about his work with that last time. So I'm trying to still get that from him, you know, and, uh, but that's when I think you would see that, you know, um, from that standpoint.
I feel like he, he facilitated the sessions with us to come up with the twelve strategic goals in the timeframe you mentioned.
Yeah.
But you had, we had to back it up to January, February to get the students.
Well, we, we had some data.
Parents.
The data, the surveys and all that element first.
It was like a six-month process.
Take that with all that.
It was a long time.
Process, so yeah.
Right.
And it should be, it was also a new process. It should be a little easier this time.
We'll know, we'll, we'll know what we're doing this time.
Yeah.
Process down.
If he's doing it.
Small.
I will tell you, I, I think he's.
Catch up.
Yeah, availability of doing it. We may have to look for another facilitator.
And that can come up.
Yeah.
I just wanted, I just wanted to acknowledge that we've gonna have that coming up for a lot of these extra sessions. Um, but I do know that there has been suggestions of the at-risk population, demographic population, uh, kind of study session. We've also had a board governance self, um, assessment. Uh, team building, board central, there's been a couple of different suggestions that I'm putting together into one kind of bucket. So I guess we don't have to deal with that. I think we will have, we will have to have study sessions. And the reason I wanted to have this discussion now is because, as we know, when we get into the end of the year in January, we have a, a, a meeting where John's kind of proposes and puts everything together and it's a very strange first, uh, January meeting. And that's usually where it's done, that everyone's not really necessarily focused on it. So I just wanted to get it a little bit out of the way. So Stacy and John can prep that for January. Um, but for right now, so any other subjects you have, please do send in.
Well, I have one. I, I mean, I do think, given our last special meeting that we called kind of at the eleventh hour, like I, I do think we need to go into a little bit more depth on our just overall policy for an open enrollment in, inner district, inner district open enrollment. Um, you know, ju- and, and this is education, right? Like just for the community's understanding, for our understanding of how class sizes are developed, how, how many sections we're gonna have in each building. Uh, you know, splits and overloads and just, I mean, I think it would be educational to have a conversation, a more in-depth conversation about that.
Yeah, and a lot of these strategic planning.
Back up on the finances, on some of that decision that's gotta come into it.
Well, that's what, so, and maybe part of it's done in one and part of it's done in another as well. So right now, the only, well, I wouldn't say the only, but by far the most, um, common theme for October is a finance-based strategic, or, uh, not strategic, um, study session. And that, I've heard that go again to bond planning as well as general budgeting process, including some mentions of, uh, the financial side to the open enrollment. But generally a financial discussion. Is that?
Budget formulation process.
Budget formulation.
And the mission-based budgeting, yeah, we talked about at the special meeting last week. So that would encompass the split classrooms.
I think.
Issues that came up.
And some of the needs of some of the at-risk kids.
Just a feedback for you, I think that's a whole lot.
It is.
That's, in my opinion, a five-hour discussion. Okay, so you, if you wanna narrow, for instance, do you wanna just talk about at-risk funds? You wanna talk about at-risk and, and, you know, what happens with that? You know, and, and kind of understand our, our schools with poverty, how that's kind of done right now in the budget, to understand that. Cuz that's a very different discussion than later, cuz then later on, you're talking about mission-based budget really. For the most part, early on, doesn't encompass a lot of the at-risk in that element initially. So like, like I said, I need you to compartmentalize
Yeah.
a little bit more micro those things, so that, you know, I think Christine can put together something that really gets at that. So if you wanna look at what, what you said, that's different than that. Not that that's bad, but I think it wouldn't be bad, just to give you a little bit of my thoughts, to understand kind of those at-risk pots, um, you know, that we get and how that works and what we do with our, our schools that tend to have more of our poverty in that element and understand what that looks like. Then I think you'll understand those funds. So then when we, mission-based budget, you'll understand what we do with that initial money and what we also still do even from the general fund with our schools that are Title I buildings and that. And then, you know, later on at that point, maybe you go, okay, now, how do we allocate those title funds and those elements? That's almost even a third, you know, kind of component to it, so.
Going to your point, like the study sessions are really meant for deep dives and non-decision-making day. So, you know, if we wanted to break it off, and I'm looking for guidance from everyone, like, so this is why we're having as a discussion item today. Is, um, I'm also fine to move the bond discussion into, straight up into a board meeting, cuz we're gonna have to make decisions on that sooner rather than later. So, you know, it's, it's where we put it. It's, it's just, uh, this is gonna be a, a three-hour discussion on one topic about learning. And, uh, yeah, I'm fine with.
Yeah.
Christine, any thoughts you might have on that?
No, just the clarity on what, like budgeting is pretty, pretty big scope. So what is it that you're looking for? How we develop the budget? Um, historical perspectives about the budget, what we see in trends. Um, and then the bond part, it just, that those are two big conversations. So how much of the bond do you wanna get into and?
Yep. And, and this is, again, not, I, I'm trying to put together the comments I've had from everyone into, uh, into a discussion, so I need.
I think moving the bond conversation to a regular board meeting, I think, in my opinion, makes more sense.
Agreed.
Just because I think we, we've laid out the priorities. I think we've been up, you know, through that process. But now what is the next step as to where?
And there's gonna be.
Some projects kind of now to Central Grade that I think is a focus, we just want the board to understand.
Yeah.
Kind of, there's a lot long-term, but I think right now we have an initial, kind of just, you know, everybody understands where we're at when bulldozers will be there soon or whatever, that the board knows what that is.
And with that, there's gonna be more feedback, so that could go into the October meeting.
And I do think for that, we would be looking for some action, just to make sure we're on the right page.
Yeah, right.
So maybe if the boards in agreement, we'll put that in as the October board meeting, leaving financial budgeting process. And again, we can narrow it down, this is the time for any.
Budget formulation.
Uh, well, that's, the question is like, what is?
I think you can do, you know, just as a thought, just to get this rolling a little bit more, you could do that budget formulation. And then you could look at kind of our title funds and our at-risk funds of how they're allocated across the district. I think that would give you an idea, especially when we talk about our schools that are title buildings versus our nine-title buildings. How that, you know, how those, those dollars are used in what we do and how that often helps support additional adults in buildings supplemental. You're gonna hear a lot of supplemental services in that. I think that would be a great conversation right there, that overview and then how those are allocated. That'll give you that picture. And then the next time, when you see, when maybe a one later on down the road here of, okay, let's talk about mission-based budgeting, that process, how it works, how those dollars are allocated. That would, in my opinion, be a good next kind of one after that, from that standpoint. Christine, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, um, because the pots in our, pots of money in our mingle, I think it would make sense to give a high-level overview of how we do the general fund budgeting to start with. Um, we have a process, it's, we can tweak it, um, as we see fit, and we've tweaked it over the years. Um, but general fund does interact a lot with the state and federal grants as it relates to additional support. So I think just kind of hearing that would make sense. Um, but general fund does interact a lot with the state and federal grants as it relates to additional support, so I think just kind of hearing that would make sense. Um, I don't know that we could get into a real deep dive about each individual school, but at a high level, we can give a good understanding is. You know, where do we start with the formula, it's not exactly where we end, but that's where we start, and then there's other things that we look at as far as priorities.
Right, and that it's a informational special meeting, it's not a um. Realignment of priorities or anything like that.
No, I, yeah, I see it kind of like getting, I feel like we have a lot of conversations about. That we are talking about this stuff, so I see it as learning, so we can hopefully be a little bit more efficient for next year. As we go through some of the discussions that we're gonna have to have, especially if we're in a.
Yeah, there's gonna be some decision-making later on the road, for sure, right, you know, and it just kinda let you know everything and what's happening now, and then you can make some decisions on. What you like, what maybe needs to change, is revenues and all those things do, I think that would be a great way to go along.
I mean, yeah, part of I, I think the reason it's there is just we are dipping heavily into the fund balance, which is not, thankfully, as a. Board, we have a fund balance, so we've got longer than ma- most people, but at the same time, as we need to start thinking about it now, and we need to know what we. We need to learn what we need to know to have those discussions. Yeah, before it's uh in a stressful time and everyone's upset.
Be helpful at least for the the budgeting, um the business office, to share the timelines, cuz quite often we'll get asked a question about, well, can we do this? Well, it's kinda too late for this year, so it would help to just kinda share those timelines, cuz, you know, we are. We're talking about next year's budget already, not necessarily at the board level, but things we're seeing and what things are gonna cost, so. Um, just understanding those timelines and when we really need decisions, if we're gonna completely change the formula, you know, can't be in February when we start our conversations with the. The school buildings, it needs to back up from there.
I agree, I think a big picture overview in October would be really helpful.
Is there any, so is that enough information that?
Christine, you good?
Yeah.
But to what Trustee Bird raised about the Title One schools, um I don't know if you were thinking specifically to the finances or if you wanted to dig into. Like, what are the additional supports kids get, but I also am interested in mental health and next year. I mean, six months from now, we'll know whether there was a supplemental or not, um but that might be something that we. Look at in a study session next year.
Could be, and you know, and there's a lot of things, I mean, right now we're getting, I think, seven FT from the ISD and a categorical for mental health, right? And if that went away, that's seven right there, you know, I mean, it, like, it it, I think it's important even for you with M A S B and even personal connections. With legislators and that, to understand that, to understand the lobbying of that and advocacy, because it is that critical.
Right, and all the volunteer efforts that emerged the last three years, the lunch buddies and so on, and. Are those falling by the wayside, or do we have volunteers in our community who are keeping them going, you know, just hearing about that, and what, knowing what choices. We we have, you know, to keep, to sustain those efforts.
And what a volunteer can and cannot do.
And my question was less about, I didn't mention the Title Ones goals, actually, that was drawn, but um. It's more generalized than that, I think, than than budget, I think budget came into context, but it was more like, you know, what is it? What are we seeing, what what difficulties are we having, um what are we doing for these at-risk kids, especially the ones that aren't graduating? You know, or that we're we're failing to retain, I got a call the other day on a seventeen-year-old that had been out of school since he was. He was on a dependency petition, he'd been out of school since he was fifteen and was homeless, you know, and so that was. That just got me really thinking about this, um of course, I know we all think about it, we deal with this all the time, but just to get it, to break it down a little bit would be. Really good.
Were you also looking for direction on timing, like January?
I.
For planning purposes?
I think that I just wanted the board to at least say that I think would, the study sessions are proving. Worthwhile, um and they'll be built into the calendar for next year, um I don't think we need too much more than that.
I think it would be good to have those dates either decided at or before to be approved at the organizational meeting.
And that's why I would like them provided as estimates, even if again, they move, they can be moved, but like. I mean, I I don't know how many we're thinking of having, I mean, I don't necessarily, and I guess that is the question of the willingness of the board. Cuz there is a lot of things, especially when we go back into strategic planning, um, yeah, we used to have. One every month. Two board meetings, and then it was like one, it was meant to be a study in a in a in a regular, but then with COVID, it's just like, do what we have to do today, and then. That kind of went away, and then they merged into one, and then we we cut the down to one a month. We can definitely go back, we can do, we can do six, um but with the, should, again, the strategic planning is gonna take three. Right there.
Three special sessions.
Spe- three special. Are they a study session?
If we, I feel to, to me, it feels like quarterly is, has been a good pace for these study sessions. That we've had this year.
I like that, but then if we're looking at the strategic planning, I think it needs to go to six. Personally, I I really don't want to sign us up for more meetings, I understand that, but like, and that's kind of why I wanted to have this, so when the, when. A schedule is presented, it's at least.
I vote for eight.
Move those mini-meetings back to seven, for your remaining term.
Board finance at seven thirty.
Maybe we could, maybe we could offer for you to continue to collect. Input from the board.
I can take input from the board, but.
We could talk in another month or two about the ti- the calendar, because I remember last year, we agreed on the study sessions for academic achievement. The first wasn't scheduled till April.
Well, that's because we only really did it really late, so that's why I want to have this discussion now, so they're spread out.
Right, exactly.
So. Maybe aim for six, and maybe we could send out a a Google doodle calendar that we can, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, and then when we roll out. For organizational, we'll have.
So, yeah, I said, I guess leaving off, yeah, let's aim for six, let's send out, we can even send out the days ahead of that meeting, um and then uh.
With three to be built within about a month frame for the strategic plan somewhere around March, April.
Yeah. Yeah, however that works out, then we can maybe do one beforehand, and then one or two after, however it shakes out. So that that's all I needed, just to at least give us a good shot, so everyone knows what to expect. All right, moving on to board policy discussion, um. I will defer this over to Connie, but if you don't already have your piles of policies out, now's the time.
All right, so last movement, we made it all the way through, we're down to twenty-two oh three was the next policy for us to take a look at. On that policy, Beth had several questions related to additions um or modifications. The first of which was to, under A one D, we reference the state merit curriculum standards. Um, it was Beth's suggestion that we add a copy of what those actual standards are to the policy itself.
Did you say twenty-two oh three?
Um, twenty-two oh three, authority to establish curriculum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, so what was the recommendation?
The recommendation um from Trustee PAC was to attach a copy of the Michigan merit standards. Under DS currently says that the right, the core curriculum will include credit requirements that need or exceed the Michigan merit standards for high school students. She suggests including a copy of what those standards are.
Then they change relatively frequently.
Yeah, they change quite a bit, and then does that mean we're gonna have to update the policy every time? You would. Okay.
But it would mean that you could actually apply the standard, the language of the policy to the standard. If it was right there in front of you.
Yeah.
You can always include them in the um, the um administrative guidelines, which don't need to be board-approved, so they could. Be updated there, if that's what the board wanted to do.
Jesse, what's your take on that, and sure?
Uh, they do change, they do, so, I mean, even little changes, like the, maybe a year ago, they changed the. The requirement for, I think, this freshman graduating class from just that econ to econ and personal finance, like some of those things, so I. I guess I would just suggest putting them in the administration guidelines because of those.
Yeah, I think if anyone actually wants them, they're gonna ask, they're probably not gonna look at the policy anyway, and they're just gonna go and ask the counselor or principal. And then we're gonna have to find them and send them to them anyway.
It's fine, yeah, it seemed to me that the only one that I had heard of was the adding of the piety. But then I've only been here about quite two years.
Under that same policy to, um, so Beth had made a number of suggestions on adding additional, I will tell you. That most of this, if not all of it, is statutorily based, so you wonder why do we have a policy on just opiate um education? That comes from statute, so like, for example, the next one talking about career development. Um, Beth had some suggestions of beefing that up, that language comes directly from um M C L three eight zero dot one one six six A. It's very specific to that language about including um information about career development. Similarly, um we talk about the constitution under F, that's under three eight oh point one one six six. Um, including information under G, talking about that specific eight through twelve on genocide, including Holocaust and um. Armenian genocide, that's specific right from M C L three eight zero point one one six eight.
Do you know if that, that curriculum, this is just a question I had, does that include Native American genocide?
Very specific to just those.
No, it doesn't, that's.
Interesting.
Yes.
If you look at all of these references at the back of that policy, you'll notice there's numerous ones.
There's slivers.
Why the one, reasons to the specificity as to that.
I meant Armenian genocide, I think that was nineteenth century.
Well, I think this gives more, even more weight to the idea that we should just, we shouldn't include the merit curriculum, because all of these curriculums could be attached. And if they're all changing, it's sort of subjective, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, I I do su- generally support, uh Beth's brought it up multiple times where, when it's kind of indicating more college. That we worded in a way that says, or trade school, like, so I do, I don't think that's necess- I was, I wasn't sure if that's where you're going within A one E. But um.
Now, what some people will say is post-secondary programming.
Yep, so.
It covers trade school, you know, like community college, you know, all those elements.
But some of that uh trade school stuff is part of high school for some of these students.
It's a part of.
High school.
That's, that's a part of our career tech program, that is not a trade school, you're saying would be, for that element, would be post-secondary. That if you're talking to replace college.
Are we on track here?
Yeah, it was, it was, I wasn't sure about A one, I wasn't sure if that's where we're going with A one E, which is the next item.
Yeah, that's, okay.
And it's just like the drug education is is, I think, more useful than just talking about opiates. But I guess my point is, you could cover opiates, but you could also cover, you know, various other drug. Education topics, you know, you can either just do bird feed all across your curriculum, or you can actually encompass. More things and tie them together.
This, I'm just saying, the statutes that's referenced here is the minimum curriculum, that doesn't mean that the district can't expound upon those. These are the mandated pieces pursuant to all of those statutory references.
And oftentimes they do in the administrative guidelines, and obviously in implementation, these are the legal requirements for what we have to do. Um, and I generally like to add little things that we can to add clarity. But as far as expanding, my personal view is trying to avoid it just because of liability, so like. Really, it is, I mean, cuz realistically, no, very few people have ever referenced. I've had five or six members of the public reference a guideline, um we've read them multiple times at this point, and are more familiar with them, but they are. More intended for legal operation of a district, and they're very specific items, it's my personal opinion, but I do like to add some when we can. So, yeah. So I don't know if that, I don't know if we encompass on twenty-two oh three, if there's anything that's more. That you would like more discussion, mo- like you're more passionate on in it, or if anyone.
No, there's other things I'm more passionate about, it just seems like it's narrow, it's real, it's like somebody gets elected to office and has. One major thought, and you think that somehow that one small topic. Is gonna cover everything that led up to the problem, is associated with the problem, and similar, you know, it just seems.
Exactly what they did, and it's what we have.
That's exactly what, that's what happens, that's, that is literally what happens at five o'clock in the morning, and in lame duck.
And Beth, you could be more spot-on with this particular level, because if you actually go and reference and read some of these statutes, they're actually named after. Some of the the people that.
Yes, I, legacy, legacy statutes.
It's this such-and-such statute, also known as the such-and-such provision.
Okay, I'll let it, I'll let it go, but it just means that they didn't get enough education.
All right, so am I hearing status quo?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, moving on then to twenty-five oh three voting requirements, again, um Beth had had a question with regards to. Sustaining from a vote, the true recommendation is that individual board member should vote on each motion. Um, unless there's a conflict of in- interest or otherwise required by law, um largely those are conflict of interest. There is no statutory requirement, however, that prevents someone from sustaining from a vote unless, of course, there is some other legal. Conflict of interest or other legal requirement, so that would be at the discretion of the board.
Okay, so that last section, the board members abstention, that part is not required?
It, there's, if you look at the third paragraph down on twenty-five oh three, it says board members must vote on all motions and resolutions. Unless abst- abstention is required due to a conflict of interest or otherwise required by law. A board member's abstention, unless required by law, constitutes a breach of the board member's duty as a public official.
Okay.
Beth, you brought this forward?
I did, and the reason is because sometimes I feel like I'm asked to vote for something and I really know very little about it. And what's more is I can't even ask about it, um.
But I feel like that this is, whether you know about it or not, you're, you're. This is gonna make you vote on it.
That's the way it is, yes, you're right, and what I'm arguing is, if you think that you are are ignorant and you cannot correct that. You should not be required to vote.
What if all sign of a abstain?
Then I think that won't would be unnecessary, would it not?
I mean, it is, I'm not totally like, I don't know if you, if you don't have all the information, whatever, you missed a study session, like, do you want someone randomly? Do you want someone voting no? I'm okay with whatever on this one, I do understand Beth's point, I don't think it's out of line, I think it's.
And and it's not that I feel like you do it capriciously, you you don't, but to me, it just seems like a a slight dishonesty.
On the other hand, I sort of feel like it's our job to be prepared to to make decisions.
It is, and that's where like, I don't think you can use it sparingly.
Right, that's why we can, I mean, we could always ask to table something, if we feel like we don't have enough information, that's a motion that somebody could make. Rather than abstain.
Yeah.
Well, the.
Good points.
Um, just for the record, I'm okay with wherever it goes, I'm just saying, I don't think it's an unreasonable discussion, cuz we've had this re- request.
Yeah, and sorry, Connie, did you, could you clarify, did you say this is statutory, this line?
No, the one piece that is statutory is if you have a conflict of interest, I'll give you an example.
Yeah, yeah, okay, no, that's understood.
If you have a spouse that works for the district, you really should not be voting on the collective bargaining agreement, giving that person a raise. That would be a conflict of interest, which means that you would abstain, or if you're voting on minutes from a meeting and you weren't present at that, um that. Where those minutes were developed, you could abstain from approving the minutes if you were not present.
Okay, so this one is not statutory, and did the Neola policy or that we had before, did it have this clause in there?
It did not.
Did not.
I mean, from a completely different angle, I just don't like the section anyway, because it's not statutory required, and we are not. At uh liberty to constitute, define what constitutes a breach of the member's duty as a public official, cuz only. The gov- the governor can do that, so why put something that we uh don't, that's my.
I, yeah.
That's my only, but I. That's my only, but I, that said is, I also don't really mind and care, so that's.
Well, I would say that we were elected to represent our constituents and, which are our students. And it is our responsibility to do the due diligence to come prepared on topics that we're being asked to make decisions on.
I just, it's a fairly false.
I agree with you, on that one I do. But when somebody says, I attended a meeting, it was a closed-door meeting, now I want you to vote on this. And you do not know the details of that closed-door meeting. I think ethically, I'm being asked to do something that I don't think is correct.
Well, you could vote no on it, if you don't want to accept the recommendation. I know, because you may not be opposed to it in general.
Some of the disciplinary.
But you have a committee where we as representatives, teachers, parents, staff, board members. Are the representatives that are making a decision as a committee and recommending to the board our recommendation.
But it's, it's your opinion that you are representing, that you want a vote on. And what I'm saying is I simply don't know, I, I don't know.
So just to move us along, I, I would make a proposal, and again, I'm making this for the, just, I'm not even, I don't mind personally where we go. Um, but if anything, we'll change sections for you to say board members should vote on all motions and resolutions, so must become should. Um, and then, uh, board members absent, uh, absent, unless required by law, may constitute a brief. And that basically you're taking out the, the legal statement of it, uh, cause it's not a legal statement. And, but it leaves in fact that you should always be planning on voting accordingly.
I think that's good, because I, I mean, the, the thing we want to avoid is just. Right, right, like abstentions that continue.
But my first, uh, I've only abstained twice, and the first one was over the bus wash. And I literally knew nothing about the financials on that, and that was what? And I just felt like I really have no idea, and this is public money, so I abstained because of my ignorance. But I didn't wanna hold the vote up, because everybody else felt pretty clear about it.
I can live with Scott's recommendation, I think it's a good compromise.
Yep, that's good, okay.
All right, I've made those changes.
Okay.
Um, the next one, I think I know, because you guys addressed this on a previous recommendation, but including under the acceptable use policy under thirty-one sixteen. District technology and excuse policy, um, that inclusion of a definition of pornography. I do believe you addressed it previously under a different policy in terms of the comfortableness of.
And I actually have a different definition of pornography to throw out there for you.
Thirty-one sixteen.
And what's the, what's being asked, I'm sorry?
To include, um, where under the, um, acceptable use, a definition of pornography, when it says pornography is excluded.
I did want to clarify, I did wanna, you found it, I was gonna say, I did wanna clarify for everyone, because it's like Beth has a problem. But just to be clear, we're doing them in sections of the way they were brought up. So like, just to give Beth, I mean, we may strike a lot of them down, but the reason we're saying Beth, Beth, Beth is because they, they're done in order.
We're about to get to Holly. I don't have that many, there's only, I mean, we did a lot of Josie's last year, so. It's just Beth's on deck tonight.
We're just getting warmed up.
I just wanted to, yeah.
So here, here's my new one for y'all. Pornography is the display or description of words, pictures, or activities. That inspire and incite lurid excitement, I love that word, lurid. It includes the use of vivid or explicit details meant to provoke thoughts and behavior. That is characteristically shocking or, um, outrageous and offensive to authority and or decency.
I, I kinda have the same problem with that that I had with the last one, which is this, those things are very subjective. Yeah, so I don't know what someone else thinks is lurid or exciting.
To, meant to.
Right, meant to evoke excitement, you know, wearing open-toed shoes excites some people. You know, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but I, I think for the same reason, we can't.
I agree, and that's why these discussions never.
And I will know that, that there are some, there's a little bit more of a breakout in this policy than there was previously. Cause this definition comes right from SIPPA, was the Child Internet Protection Act.
So you, you can say the school board cannot define pornography, so how in the world do we ever know whether it actually?
What was the language we used before?
I, I can't recall what we kept in there.
We kept it really?
I think we made the determination that administration has that.
And I think I just heard Holly say, Holly, sorry. That this, the SIPPA, right, this is what is being recommended by the Children's Internet Protection Act. Yeah, this is language right from that statute. And it talks, I mean, it does go a little bit more deep into a definition in terms of depicts, describes, represents in a patently offensive way. As to what is suitable reminders, actual simulated sexual act or sexual conduct, actual or simulated normal or perverted sexual acts, blighted exhibition of genitals. It goes on, I think this is right.
It goes on further even than.
But it's in the law.
I can't remember what we used the last time, if it applies to this, I was trying to find it, but, um.
Yeah, I don't, once we get into defining pornography, I think you're gonna open up a huge can of worms of what definition, you know, I mean.
But if nobody reads the policies, we're all free.
Until you're not.
Didn't elicit any.
I made a joke about it this time, but I really don't want to, uh, spend, uh, an hour trying to define pornography, so I would.
I think this is subjective enough to, or this one is broad enough, because there are things out there that are harmful to minors. Which aren't necessarily sexual too.
And it depends on the minor.
And we have to follow these and our filters have to, have to abide by following that sort of law.
Which is why that's the point of the policy is that law.
Are we ready for five four one nine? All right, next one, yes, uh, um. Five four one nine, I think we did talk about this under the reading assessment. But that law is specific to the third grade reading and retention law. Beth had asked about adding something similar to that, I believe that the board had already talked about that previously when we discussed the other provisions of fifty-four nineteen. Leaving it status quo, but I'll circle back just to make sure I'm not incorrect.
Yeah, I would just add, right after the word literacy in the first la- line. Um, literacy in the language, whether you specify English and math, so that is four words. So that the emphasis is not totally on language and not also on math. I think both of them are extremely important.
But isn't this one about reading assessments?
Yeah, it's, uh, covers MCL three eight zero one two eight F, which is specific to third grade reading and literacy.
But is the policy only to reflect the law?
It is, and this element of the reading assessment that we're required to do, it is directly related to that. And benchmark assessment, we have to do for literacy.
So a lot of the laws state that we have to have.
Have that covered, correct?
Under this. Because we have to, because of that law.
But we have that covered, all I'm asking is that we also include math in our policy for teachers.
If you were to do that, you would do that under a separate section, a separate policy.
Then, well, I won't go into that, but I, I think there's a catch twenty-two. For board members, two main functions, one of them is to create policies for the school district. That's not, what we're doing is just endorsing the law.
You're not endorsing, you're following the law, and your policies are required to follow the law.
But we're not able to say anything around that, what I'm saying.
You are, you just have to do it in a separate policy.
There's been some talk about this third grade reading law being repealed too.
Correct, that is also true.
Well, they have issues with that.
And I think we just have to be careful about creating policies that, you know, I mean, I'm not opposed to creating policies. But I think we just have to be careful then, what does that mean from a legal perspective if we're not following our? And if I do recall, last time the board had mentioned, when you speci- when you're specific to like adding math, what about social studies? What about science? And the previous one talking about following the Michigan merit curriculum, we are encompassing, you know, multiple subject areas. That's required by sta- by, by law.
I'm, I'm looking at the Q two three is what I'm looking at now.
One thing I think that's really helpful in this discussion, and I think Connie could probably expound on this a little bit more than I can. That schools are, are bound and boards are bound by the law as it's written, we can't change it, we can add things to it.
That's what I'm trying to do.
But if we're doing that, we also have to, we're also responsible for that. So we have to be careful to do that in a way that doesn't subject us to more liability than we might already have. And so there is a whole administrative code that governs that, and I know Connie knows like a little bit more about that. Whether you can expand or contract the law as it's written and comes down to us. So, um, it's a, it's a larger conversation, but I think that the best way to say it is that we can add to it. But we really can't detract from it, and we really can't, um, we can't not have it, if that makes sense. We can't change what's written if it's already in the law.
I think yet a piece that's important to note is, is that a lot of our policies are there and they're written the way that they are, because they're incorporating the statutory language. When we get into too much, you know, detailing and changing that language, if it changes at all the intent of the focus of the statute. Then we're getting to the defensibility of the policy itself. And so a lot of districts would prefer not even to have all of these policies to talk about, you know, teach, specific to teaching genocide or around opiates or HIV. But we're required to have them, so the more that we start to put in there, the district needs to be, and the board needs to be confident. That what we're saying to the general public when they go to our board policies is, we're gonna be able to implement this with fidelity. And so if we're going in and we're talking about a math curriculum, and we're talking about these things, what does that look like, how does that look like? Apart from the statutory pieces, less is more, just in my humble opinion. Because the less that you guys prescribe yourself and what you have to do, the more you are able to do. This is narrowing your focus when you have to narrow your focus.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to move on, or the only thing I would suggest, if there was any compromise that needed to be had, was that there would be. You could put, notwithstanding the above, the district may provide intervention in other subjects. Therefore, you're basically saying, this is what's required by law, we're not saying that we're focusing. It almost like says that we have to say this, and then you're not taking away, I wouldn't put math, or anything, cause then you have to start listing anything.
But this policy is specific about reading assessments, instruction, intervention, and retention.
But I'm saying rather than add more about.
Or create a whole.
Create a whole other section, have that discussion, it's simply to say we can also do it in other sections, notwithstanding, which means that. Ignoring the above, you know, we are saying that we can do it in other interventions as areas. So I think I had not, notwithstanding the above, the district may provide intervention in other areas. So it basically says this isn't just our focus, but we can do it wherever. That was, I, I don't mind, again, I'm trying to provide, for this, for the spirit of, uh, moving through. I'm trying to provide at least a solution that we can vote up and down and move on, so.
Connie, do we, do we already have that language somewhere that the board has the ability to create interventions wherever necessary?
If you go back to the curriculum, um, policies that we've already covered, that's embedded in those.
So we could just take something, we could take something like that. I'm just, again, I'm happy for the board to vote, I just wanna try and turn what Beth has given into something to say yea and eon for us all.
Yeah, we have it, and then the other question I have is, do we have a math curriculum policy?
I don't think we have a policy specific to math curriculum.
Because we're not required to do a math assessment, other than the M step that has it in it.
Yep, so, and again, Connie can shut down anything from a legal point of view, um, but I'm just. That would be my suggestion for a compromise, happy to vote.
My recommendation would be to leave the policy as status quo, if you wanna develop something around math curriculum, we can certainly do that, bring it for another time. But at this point, that's policy specific to the, the reading law and retention at the third grade level. Not opposed to directing something different, I just don't know that that's the appropriate placement for it, cause that statute specifically references third grade reading.
And I won't be shocked to see this go away at some time in the future.
So I'm gonna trust Connie on this one, she's clearly stated twice to leave it as is, so I, I, that's, yeah.
Okay.
All right, Holly, you're on deck, fifty-one oh one, student expression. If you look, um, and we need, it is, where Holly's recommending we move the, remove this, just the sentence. It said student activism is subject to the above standards, Holly, I'll defer to you as to your rationale.
So, you know, I think student activism is a, is part of education, honestly. I think that students, um, do sometimes, whether, depending on whatever subject they feel passionate about. Or that they wanna talk about, a lot of students might get up and, and be active about, for example. Um, I can bring up a lot of different examples, we've seen some go through and, and talk about, um. School policies, you know, and I think that, that kids have a voice and they can do that. I've seen some get up and talk about, you know, politics, of course. We have, uh, students' right, right to life, we have a lot of different kids that feel different ways. And I sort of feel like school is one of those places, even though we don't want a huge disruption of the school day. But I feel that, um, if we are gonna talk about social issues of the day or rules or things. Schools are actually, you know, one of the best places to do it, um, where they, they learn how to do that in a peaceful and. Critical way, and critical, I mean, with good argument, with, um, research, with intelligence. And to me, schools have always been one of the places where kids have had, um, guidance and freedom to do that. And if we say they can't do it, you know, in these policies, they're gonna have less right to do that than some of the people who come up here and stand with. You know, photos of me, right?
I don't think that this is stating student activism is subject to the above standards, basically just meaning.
It would not materially and substantially interfere with or disrupt school operations.
I, I sort of also feel like it, it, it's not, I know it's not needed in this policy, it's not by law needed to have that language in there. But it's also one of those things that I think people would pick up, and it's, um, I think it's inflammatory in itself to. To include it.
I don't like the wording, I get that part, but, um.
Can we get rid of all that section, starting with, it's the third paragraph, third line down. After the semicolon, and it starts enumerating is obscene, sexually explicit, all that kind of thing?
That's constitutional, though it was considered non-protected.
And, and, wasn't there more recent, that was a big recent Supreme Court decision?
Basically, this is all coming right from your First Amendment Supreme Court cases. It's tying in all the substantial disruption, um, significantly interferes with the rights of others. There are certain levels of speech that are not protected under the First Amendment, that's really what that third paragraph is getting at.
Cause we surely have seen some of that very recently.
Absolutely.
Yes, we have, on major college campuses, yes, ma'am.
K two was a little bit more of a protected environment, however, than your post-secondary. I'm just having a hard, I think that what the student activ- activism is subject to the above standards. I think that it's saying they, they must also.
Yeah, but Holly, Holly's point, I think I agree with Holly's point is by, by using the word student activism is subject. It's suggesting that we're trying to nullify anyone's ability to speak, like, we don't want. it's suggesting that we're trying to nullify anyone's ability to speak, like, we don't want that. So I think it's actually the use of the word.
If we say expression, like, or if we, yeah, speech and expression, I think it...
Just say all speech and expression is subject to the above standards.
I see what you're saying, okay, I see what you're saying.
So you were saying student speech and expression?
Can I ask a favor on this one? I'm not against it, but before the board adopted, I would like to review trend with whatever language you come up with, because that paragraph, I tell you for our principles, is vital, right? And I do not want anything that somehow could interfere with our administrators enforcing some of those things. So not against, but I'm just asking to not adopt whatever at this point give us the opportunity to run that past.
I figured there's a few of these.
Because I think it's, it's unclear, and I think maybe it could be cleared up, but I think what that is trying to say is that we can't hide behind activism, and yet still disrupt people, interfere with the rights of others, but do it under the, I'm a student activist. And so I think that's what it's saying, is that you can be an activist, you just still have to respect the rights of others, not disrupt the school environment, and doing so, you know, kind of peaceful activism.
That was my interpretation, too.
Or you could put, here's a one that doesn't change the words, but does change the wording, is student activism is, I wouldn't say encouraged, but student activism is, is welcomed, but subject to the above standards, something like that. That way, we're not, we're not...
Can, can we give that a try, let us run that past legal? And then we'll get back with you to see if their culture, or if there's something they would want to maybe change on that.
So what I'm hearing is student activism is encouraged, but is subjected.
Do you want encouraged or welcomed, or what?
Student expression, including activism, is subject to the above standards, too.
Say welcomed, I'm like, welcome.
I think that would encourage students... That's just encourages students to be an activist, but do so in a manner that doesn't disrupt the educational environment.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Or infringe on the rights of others.
I think guidance is good on that. This just sounds too much like a blanket, like, somebody will read this and say no.
Yep, I'll, I'll review that one.
Somebody else just mentioned, I thought, I mean, you could even say peaceful activism. And, and we might be suggest, subjective, I don't know what that is. I think this is like, tells us what's not peaceful, for sure, so that language...
She knows the spirit of what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Take that back, see what she comes up with.
I mean, you could argue the walk-up to be peaceful, too.
And maybe put the, the last, this is just semantically, but put the last sentence up with the, the third paragraph.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that, we can do that, that's, that's subjecting.
All right, fifty-two oh one, under E, taking students into custody. Holly would like to add a sentence that says, physical force, using the least physical force possible, physical force should only be used to ensure the safety of the student self or others.
Which sec-, do you know which?
I, I believe it was, when that, when practical, a student should be taken into custody in a manner that, and then add...
Okay, yeah.
Uses the least physical force possible, physical force should be used only to ensure student, the safety of the student self or others, and minimizes observations by others and disruption to the educational environment.
So it sort of follows the least restrictive means standard that we often see under IDEA stuff, but we just kind of changed the wording a little bit so that we acknowledge that, you know, kids have a right to safety, even under those circumstances, least restrictive, well, I think that was the wording I used, I don't know if I wrote it down that way.
I, I don't like the word, because the only issue I have from a legal, and you can tell me if I'm wrong here, is like, least restrictive means absolute least, which maybe there's two that are close to, like, like, again, I'm trying to think out, like, I think your intent is it should be done in a, the, the least, but I don't like the word least.
Well, I think it...
Minimally invasive, I don't know.
Least restrictive usually, in, in all of these contexts, and most of the educational context means, I mean, you use the force that is necessary for the circumstance, but it's gonna be, so if a kid is acting out and he needs to be, or she needs to, they need to be subdued in some way, they're hurting somebody, our police officer is gonna throw them down on the ground and kneel on their neck, probably not actually. But are they gonna stop them physically?
What are your thoughts on rather than saying the least physical force possible, using the least physical force necessary, given the circumstances?
Yeah, necessary, I thought, isn't that what I said? Least restrictive means necessary.
For clarification, I don't know from our board policy, we can tell police what to do.
Correct.
But I do think we can strongly suggest, or, you know, it is the board's intent that that happened. Because I would hate for police do what they think they need to, and somebody comes back and says, well, you said this, and they didn't. So now you're liable for what the police did, and you have no control over what the police do. But I think the board could say it's intent and it's asking that our law enforcement abide by what the wishes are of the board.
Yeah, and if you're gonna ask, if you're just gonna ask for someone to do it, you can...
But are we liable for what an SRO does in our buildings?
Not necessarily, no.
So if a student gets hurt during a takedown, we're not liable?
That's the police department, that's their deal and what they're doing.
There's a reason, like, they can't conduct searches without having to have the subpoenas versus we can do it with reasonable suspicion, they need probable cause, we have two different standards.
And even for the same way, we have a much stronger standard for even touching a student from the most recent, help me out here, the, the law that passed for restraint, for, restraint. Seclusion restraint is very tight with us, the law enforcement has a completely different standard in which they follow by that than we do.
So in that case, I think you can come back and encourage the least restrictive.
I would strongly suggest.
And I think that's fine.
Because, and, and I'll be real with this, because... And I'm not, I'm not saying bad things about our law enforcement, but if a student does get hurt or something happens, you know...
We can say this is what our intent was.
There is very little recourse for somebody who tries to challenge a police officer in that regard. There's, there's literally no, the, the only controlling body that would look at those actions is the Attorney General, and it's extremely rare.
How about I'll take a shot at some language, Holly, talking about how the district encourages, because I do think we want to make sure we draw the line between law enforcement, when they come in on our property, versus what we have the ability to control.
And I just want to make sure... They want them to come in when you need them. That we're not, I don't know, infringing on law enforcement's ability to do their job either, and that, that, because they have to react, you know, in a split second, and kind of sum up what's going on and...
That's why I think it's the least, the least.
I agree with you, but let me throw one other piece, I think some board members, especially Holly and Josie, might remember. When we met, for instance, with the city council, there was some of their concerns. And so I do think having the spirit of what the board wants in that is something that goes to that spirit of when we originally signed the agreement with the city for an SRO. Those are some of the things that were brought up that I think is important to put in there.
Right, right. And the other thing, though, is you remember that some of the city council members didn't even want them to carry their guns, and...
So hence my point, I think that giving, giving our intent to let them know and, and ask to them to abide by that as much as possible, I think does not hurt a thing.
I, I just sort of feel like we, we should protect our students as much as possible. Being a member of a community that is disparately taken down by police officers, and our students are too, it's a big concern for me. You know? So these are at-risk kids that are the ones who are being subject to physical force. And sometimes, you know, we know there's statistics, and I'm, I'm not gonna point out, I love our police officers, they do a great job, you know, but things do happen. People are human, things happen in the heat of the moment, so as much as we can encourage that safety for our student.
Well, it protects both sides.
Well, it does, yeah, it does.
I'll take a shot at it, we'll be back in a second. Fifty-two oh four, student appearance and dress code. Just adding, Holly would like to add, just at no point will the restrictions infringe on protected cultural or religious beliefs. I think that mirrors what the board did adopt for the graduation time, where I was saying...
I just, let me, let me just throw, like, I don't know, let me just throw this out, like, again, setting a standard of what that is. If a student says my religion is something that pushes that, you know, because I go back to the policy earlier, I go back to the standard of impede, you know, infringes upon the educational environment.
Like Confederate flag, teach, like, yeah.
That's my religion, and makes a claim on that?
Well, that's part, no, it wouldn't be religion so much as cultural background, I think, in some, in that kind of case.
I'm not against the spirit, and would like to figure out a way to word it, I just don't know what that is.
I think it, I mean, we can follow the language we had for the, for the graduation dress code. We know that it didn't really spring any issues.
But I think it did, no, I, I think you're right, I think that we said exactly what the, the group was, and some intent from that standpoint.
Yeah, that we said the students can wear something that's of cultural or religious significance.
But I actually think we identified by a federally recognized, I think we had some language of it, said it anyway.
Now, it was more general than that, and it was subjective, because...
I think it just all still fell under, you cannot substantially disrupt, so...
Yeah, that's right, right, good point.
What it says, actually, it's the next policy over, fifty-four ten, commencement, and it's in the last paragraph. And what it says, graduating students be allowed to wear recognized items of religious or cultural significance in a dignified manner.
I like it, I would like to just add that phrase, kind of go back to that standard of that does not disrupt.
It's still in there, that's in this policy.
Well, I'm more worried about flowing garments in a chemistry lab with an open buns of vinegar. That's what I'm more worried about.
I didn't know if that would come in there.
That's not on my list of worries.
If you ever saw a kid catch fire, you, you would remember that, you would not like that.
Well, right now, the policy itself says that the, the dress, hairstyle, blah, 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 that is a threat to safety, health, or welfare of other students, or violates fifty-one oh one, or disrupts the educational environment.
Right, so that part's covered.
I mean, I do appreciate what you're saying, I get a little nervous that others may find a loophole in that to wear something that...
I feel like we had this conversation last year, earlier, you know, like, cultural or religious significance. If we used the same language and couldn't, I mean, are we gonna walk it back for the graduation, too?
No.
As I say all the time, right, this is not definite, you can always change it if you run into...
Well, we want to take our best shot at it now.
But my just point being, if, you know, if, if kind of what I think Holly's trying to say in the spirit of trust, you give them a chance, and if we find loopholes in those things, then the board will have to address it and revisions to the policy.
And some, I mean, I would argue, I mean, some of these policies play into each other, too, right? Like, I mean, you've got the one that we just talked about with, you know, disruptions.
And I think that's a part, just, just know that that is very subjective, that's gonna have to be determined by a principal, you know, in the, in a lot of these situations. And if we run into one that parents really protest and they want to make a case, then that's something, they're gonna bring to the board. And we talked about, yep, is there is loopholes, and it's just too broad, then let's have a discussion. But I kind of have a little bit of that spirit of that chance, again, with those protections of already impedes the educational process, those kind of things that have been determined. Jesse, I'm just interested in your, you know, you just come out of high school principalship, give your thoughts.
About the dress code policy, Josh?
Well, specifically to the, you know, did that phrase of, you know, of cultural and...
Yeah, having that phrase about being distracting to the educational environment is really helpful for our administrators. I mean, and a lot, sometimes that's that another student tells they feel uncomfortable about that, or they feel scared about that, or they feel threatened by that. There are a lot, there's a huge spectrum of what some of our students claim to believe, and thus gives them the right to wear or not wear in certain situations in which we would like them to wear more or not wear that for safety or distractions.
How many times have we had it come up? I mean, because I know it was an issue with graduations, so we wanted to make sure there's a carve-out for graduation specific. But in terms of challenges to the dress code, where people have, have argued that they're, you know, religious or culturally sort of being... I think it's, you know, it really comes down to one of those things, if, if, they still have, we, we obviously still have the free exercise clause of the Constitution, which gives people those opportunities, you've got your first...
I can give you an example where it came up for us last year. During Indigenous holiday, or Indigenous Peoples' Day, there was a suggestion to rock your mocks. And then the question came up, well, what if some people don't have mocks and they feel bad? And that was, that was something given to our TCAPS Indigenous Ed person as a reason why we shouldn't have Rock Your Mocks Day. You know, we, we, just because it's not being reported to a principal or a superintendent, doesn't mean it doesn't happen all the time. So we have plenty of students in our communities, Native American communities, Indigenous communities. There are Muslim children, you know, that get teased for their, their, their headdresses. I mean, this is, this applies to people who are not in the majority.
I think we're looking at the focus, though, that the board policies are intended to prevent administration or the board from including a student from wearing, you know, something of religious or cultural significance, versus we do need to address the peer pressure amongst students and the bullying and harassment based on some of those things. But is it the, is it the board, or the administration, or the teaching staff who are preventing a student from, you know, expressing themselves from a religious or cultural standpoint?
The Rock Your Mocks came from, from admin and teachers, that, those comments, yeah.
Those are the things that I think need to be brought to attention so they can be addressed, because I don't think they would be encouraged from central administration.
It's a cultural issue, not a policy issue, I think is what you're saying.
Well, that's what I'm saying, though, policies are sometimes put in place to protect people who don't always feel the power to speak up about it.
I mean, I think we need to either...
If they don't feel like they're being protected by policy, why would they bring it up?
And I, I would think it would go more into, into bullying and harassment personally.
With the other components in there, I, I can support it. I mean, as, as long as, again, those other pieces of not disrupting the educational process, those elements in that. And like I said, if all of a sudden we just find that we are, so we have to address it with work.
What if you added a sentence to the bottom, is that the board appreciates and respects religious and cultural expression?
Is that anymore?
I don't think that's a protection, though.
And Holly, yeah, I didn't know, you had that word, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, no.
I didn't know Holly suggested infringe, the restrictions will, no, there'll be no restrictions infringing on protected cultural or religious beliefs that were protected is important, right?
Religious, I mean, we could even use the same language that we have in the commencement part, as far as I'm concerned.
Did we have protected in there?
We said they'd be allowed to wear recognized items of religious or cultural significance in a dignified manner.
I think that's a good statement.
I can add that.
That's consistent, too.
Right, it's consistent.
Yep, and it's consistent.
I'll add it to that policy as well.
Okay.
Last one from Holly, fifty-two thirteen, the personal protection orders against the student. Right now, it currently reads that the building principal does not need may work with the families to change the class schedules, lockers, and lunch. Holly wanted it to say, um, may, to say will, work with the family members. I think in our private dialogue, one of the things that we did have some concerns about is whether or not the district has the inability to do that based on if the student is special education, you know, those sorts of things, that they will work with them when possible, but there will be times when the board is, the district is not able to do that, but...
Well, I say may, just because I think the attempt should be made. You know, if they can't, they can't do it, you know, if they're, if the schedule can't be changed, but if we're saying, I mean, will work, meaning they should at least make the attempt. And if it can't be changed, or something can't be done, then at least, you know, we've, we've covered that.
And I might have misunderstood, because it does currently say, say may, are you good with leaving it at may, or?
No, I was saying will.
You wanted will?
Yeah, I want, I would like the principal or designated to work with the families in those situations with the, you know, to see if those things can be done. I know that that's generally the practice already, but if you're just saying may, it makes it permissive.
I also don't, sometimes there may not be accommodations that both sides can agree upon, I don't know, I... From a, from a, again, a point of view of that can go in administrative guidelines, I feel like that, the will opens us up to liability.
Well, it already says it in the second one, or the third one, while the district will seek to work collaboratively, collaboratively with both families. You see what I'm saying, so it's not...
Will, will seek to work collaboratively is...
Right, it's inconsistent.
Do this, I mean, seek to work collaboratively. Do this, I mean, seek to work collaboratively.
I actually was thinking the solution, what if the solution was will seek to or will attempt to work with the families?
Or will when possible?
Yeah, something, something, instead of making it entirely permissive. Like you, you can, you do, don't have to work with them at all.
Yeah, but I would leave the, oh, okay.
Okay, so will if possible?
When, when possible.
When possible.
Got it. Change me. Alright, real quickly, um, circling back, last time we met, you had asked me to include under section fifty-seven oh-three medication reference to, um, the over the counter medications. I did add that provision for you. Um, and I pulled that language directly from, thank you, Ms. Hogan, from our form that parents are filling out. They talk about ages and what kids can carry in terms of over the counter emergency medications and those sorts of things. So it should reflect that now in the policy.
Good.
All covered.
The only, the only thing is, I think if you have a, a kid that says a fifth grader and it's calamine lotion, the parent should be able to ask the principal, it's okay if you have that calamine lotion or something like that. You know, we say no elementary school kids can apply their own meds. They always have to go to the office.
I think we do at the elementary level. Even that.
Cause I, I think, you know, cause it
I think a little bit of that is just reactions of other kids passing in, stuff like that. I think at that level, the cognizance of kids, I just, I think we're pretty standard in that thought.
I, I understand that. But most kids don't have to put pink stuff that makes them really scared.
Oh, you'd be shocked.
But then what happens if another kid puts it on another kid and then that kid goes home and it's like, has a crazy reaction and then you're, you know, I think
That should be extremely rare, like, and like
That pink stuff
Is that all that rare?
It's true. I've, I've seen them put things at work.
Right, they eat mud, remember?
Alright, and one last, we talked about we're going into the next discussion item and then I can
Can I do one? I've got one that I thought was included on the list, but I, and I think I even told you I was gonna tell you about it, but it's a quick one. And it's five-eight-oh-seven. It's the very last policy. And I just had a couple of people mention, like, so this has come up in different discussions. So it says, students may not be disciplined or penalized for not reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you make that neutral to just be like their choice of reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? So you can discipline or penalize a kid for reciting the pledge? Like, I guess it, I didn't know if it could be written in a way that says you can do whatever.
The one thing that they have said from the Pledge of Allegiance standpoint, you give them an opportunity to say it. They can opt out, but they have to stand there and not be disruptive during that period of time. So students are not forced to say the pledge, they just have to not be disruptive while the pledge is going on. But if you guys wanted to read something different, that's
I'm fine with it. I was just, again, on the more neutral of choice of reciting pledge rather than one side of reciting pledge.
Do you point exactly where you're, are you talking about that last paragraph?
Last paragraph, it says, students' participation in the Pledge of Allegiance is voluntary. Students may not be disciplined or penalized for not reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, when it could, should just be their choice to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I can you penalize someone for saying it? I mean Yeah, that was my only thing that came up.
There's some language it could have been.
I'm fine with, uh
I, I will not, from a practice, be penalizing anybody for doing it.
I know you don't anyway.
I have one more question again. Sex ed, your sex ed policy, it's an out.
Well, we've got one more policy to do it.
Can that be changed to an out?
What's, hold on.
Want sex ed to be out?
I think the law says you have to have the out.
To be okay, because some states have changed it.
I believe the law says out. And there's even a specific form that they've identified for out.
I think we're choosing
Some parents said they've never seen the form. I have no idea.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, last one I gave to all of you that goes to your last discussion item. The true policy did not have a policy relative to naming of facilities. So this is actually a Neola policy, which I have created a new policy under our new revision. It's the same as Neola, same language, unless you guys want to revise this policy. Um, but it goes to your discussion that you're going to have.
I saw that, I noticed that it says true at the bottom. Does that mean they are okay with this if we were to adopt it?
We would, we'd have to get their approval, but yeah, there's nothing statutory about this.
Yeah.
And so there's, we're not changing anything of theirs that they've modified. We're just including it in our bundle.
The only, I do have one change on here. The dedic- dedicatory plaque shall be places, so it's just a typo.
Should be placed.
Yeah.
Now, the, the big issue that from exec with this that's been brought up is this is only for new facilities. The policy doesn't say anything about old or, you know, current facilities. So just one tweak there of some way needs to be made at least. You know, to, to let, you know, kind of where it starts from and bringing it to the board.
The only thing is, I think it'd be so much more useful to say who the person is or why it's being named for them more than having my name on that. You know what I'm saying?
That could be part of the plaque, though, couldn't it?
I, I think who they are, cause how many times have you walked by a building and you said, who's that? Somebody said, who's Ida May or Ida
Tompkins. There was a nice plaque with a description of, of outside the superintendent office. I don't know where it's gone.
Who they are if, if you name a building for them.
Well, the problem with the policy now is there's a discouragement from doing that. So so that's why you wouldn't have that. So, you know, and, and I think there was a historical past where obviously this building was named after former superintendent, I believe. You know, and so, you know, you would have to go
John really wants his building.
I'm good.
Um, but I think, well, there's two parts, right? We have to change the, uh, new facility to cover any facility.
Or just take new out, naming of facility.
Naming of facility, yeah. Well, except then it's gonna change, I mean, you'll have to reword it a little bit when construction of a new school facility.
Right.
What we can do is just say, um, take out that first sentence, the board executive committee shall consider names for new and existing facilities. And then leave that.
And then is that, is that the only change general board should refrain from naming? So everything else is pretty much the same. So it's basically discourages it, but you
And the board is, we're okay with the board executive committee? Has, is that where, I mean, has it ever come before?
I think we've been presented, it's gone through, like, I'm trying to think of like the
Executive Committee and then from that point to the full board.
I think even then.
Soccer fields came through like finance.
I think you presented it in the superintendent's report as name.
But it always goes on exec still though, cause it's on the agenda. So even if the finance does it, it goes on the agenda, the agenda's approved by the executive committee. I mean, it is a bit semantics. You could say by a board committee, if you wanted to, if you wanted to do that, but theoretically
Does it even need to go through a committee? It's just by the board, however it gets on there, we can leave.
Cause what if it goes to board, well, yeah, board exec and then they don't approve it to full board for discussion?
Then, then any board member
Any board member can ask it to have it, you know, and voted on at that point. I mean, you're cognizant of that enough, but
I don't really mind either way.
So maybe remove board executive and just say, a board committee?
Could.
But then in the dec- the dedicatory plaque, would you say who they are and why that building was aimed for? Just a couple of sentences. It's
I think that this is different because, for instance, TCAP's Montessori doesn't have a name, so I think all that would pertain still. The question is if at any point you did want to name it after somebody, you know, you would add a part to this, and if you wanted to add that piece, you could.
And I'm not sure I exactly understand how you guys want me to read the first one. Um, right now, you wanted to say a board committee shall consider names of the new facility?
Can we say may consider? I mean, shall makes it sound like we're expecting.
Well, the only problem with that is, you know, when you do that, you require a superintendent or staff to bring it to you.
With the word may versus shall?
With the word, word shall. If you say may, do I have discretion to not even bring it to you?
What about if you just said the board may consider names for new and existing facilities?
I mean, every single one of these is gonna go to the board anyway, so why don't we just say it goes to the board?
Versus a committee.
Get in trouble.
I, I wanted to reflect what you guys want. I just think it might get a little confusing if you just say a committee.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, no, it just goes to the full board, the full board shall consider.
The board shall consider names for new and existing facilities.
Yeah.
In general, the board shall refrain from naming
I guess can, cause you don't shall, but means that we, it sounds like we're renaming all of the buildings, but
Yeah, that's what, what my concern was, with that may.
But I do like, I think the point of the, in general, the board shall refrain upon naming facilities is an important one, cause it's meant to be an extremely high, which you can straight up say, there's an extremely high threshold of when a naming bar is higher now. And I'm just thinking, like, I'm not trying to get into anything here, but I'm thinking down the road, if someone walks up and says his twenty million dollars, hundred, fifty million, a hundred, I mean, we've seen it in other districts.
How do you spell your first name?
I get that too, but I also, it's like, it's like literally like to the point of like, uh, we want to make sure that it's, it's not, we're not changing the policy then to fit that need. That we've just addressed the, if someone walked in and said, I'm gonna give, which happened in Mansalona, I think, and a few other places where someone gave twenty-five million.
Universities.
I, I think Mansalona or Calcasas, one of the two, also received a very large donation for running tracks and everything someone paid for privately.
Well, you don't know anything about that with Munson Hospital, do you?
They named it after someone else, I think. Yeah, but Munson, like, but like, the point is, is if, if we wanted to do that, I don't want to have a policy that we have to then have a discussion to change. So the bar should be a very high threshold of, of service or contribution to the district, contribution.
Or to the, to the science or whatever.
So But I wouldn't think that a financial, uh, like if someone was gonna, for example, donate twenty-five million versus someone that dedicated a lifetime of service, I think it would still be evaluated in a way
I'd agree. That's why I wanted to make sure it is, I mean
What you have there allows you to do all those things you decide.
Yeah.
Yeah. So as long as it's, we're saying a high threshold.
May consider names for new and existing facilities during a full board meeting period. In general, the board shall refrain.
Yep.
There's Yeah.
That's what I want to read?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So when I asked John to name one of those innovation centers for Catherine Johnson, he just blew me off. But she was incredible.
No doubt.
She was incredible.
And you can always make your case for the full board.
After we pass it.
Alright, that's all I have for board policy.
Alright. So there were another, there were another, obviously, there's a few policies coming back.
So what I'll do is I'll make those changes, bring them back to the board. Now, I, I do need to put it on your eyes as radar screen that we need to get to the point where we rescind and adopt policies. Because right now, we're paying for two policy services and some of our policies are not up to date that needed to be adopted by July one. So every month that we get out, we're working on antiquated outdated
We've got another group to bring to you, updated ones, as we start to press.
Yeah.
Can we, can we do it via email? Could Connie, no.
So what I
You can email them out.
Is this these very few that we have left to do?
Yeah.
Share them out in committees, so everyone has an opportunity to review. Then when we come back, if you're okay with them, we'll adopt them and I'll have the resolution ready to rescind the old policies and adopt
And then at the next preceding month, we'll start bringing the updates to you. And that's something we will then consistently do.
Okay.
And there's gonna be, I mean, there's a few that we've even told other board, like, members, like, we can come back to this if we have to, I think.
Yeah. And keep in mind that, that modified policies versus new policies are on the consent agenda. So, I mean, we don't have to, you know, rebuild the, the, you know, the Titanic every time we want to do one of these policies.
And after Labdak, you might have a stack going.
Oh, it is gonna, yeah. So do we, so just for process, um, obviously, you're gonna make some changes that we've discussed today. We're gonna have to have those come in, plus anything else that we need to have done for the initial bunch. That can be presented to us in committee next time. Do, are you suggesting one more round of anything that we're going to, are we going in for October?
My suggestion would be is that we take the handful that we still need to make sure that we've, the changes that we've made, that Tru's okay with them, that we tweaked, that really should not take that long. And then there's a resolution that the board has to pass to rescind all existing policies. And then another resolution that the board has to pass to adopt all of the new policies, and it's all done in one file.
So you, what, my question is, do you want that? Are we talking October or November?
I think ultimately October.
I'm, I'm fine. I just wanted
Yeah, I don't really think that there's that much out there in terms of hanging through the stuff that, that we, that, at least that I'm hearing from tonight. There's some wordage tweaks, but we can do that and certainly wordsmith in pretty quick time when we get back to the next board meeting during discussion.
And again, we can always agree as board members, if we're to a point where there's a couple of questions, that we will allow a couple of meetings to do any, at least entertain any updates, so.
Yeah, for sure. That is just gonna get us ninety-five percent there. And if there's still five percent that you guys want to continue to work on once we've adopted them, then you can certainly do that. It just gets us out of that world of having to leg into two different, you know, two different rooms.
Policy services.
Okay, excellent. Good work, everybody. Thank you.
Yep, and there was a number of other updates wanted, but I think we're gonna, they're not
Delay those to October.
We're gonna have to, yeah, I don't think anyone's
I don't want to do it the whole time, but I don't want to do it in camera.
Yep, okay. I can stop carrying this box around soon or I Okay, I'm just getting my agenda back.
Alright.
The training.
No, I think Stacy said I'm the first to give my date.
Alright, so we're moving on from board policy discussion, uh, moving on to Central High School tennis naming facility.
We're gonna do it all individually. That's the best deal.
What are we talking about?
The training for the superintendent for.
Yeah, I sent out dates.
Let's cover, sorry. We can cover that after. Anyone can do, anyone can do it on their own time, but no, we're not doing it together. But you can cover that with Stacy after. Sorry, I know I'm
Yeah.
Losing a few people here. Uh, so Central High School tennis facility naming, um, obviously we heard in public comment, we have received an email a few months ago, I think, um, and one previously, I think, at least a comment previously, uh, I don't know, a year ago. And so the question is, is I, we, do we want to have a discussion? Do we have a general discussion? This is put on here purely as we, we haven't talked about it publicly. We need, this is the only way we can talk about it. We may not be ready. We may have to do it after the policies are adopted. We can have a general discussion, fine with whatever the board kind of wants. I'm not opposed to this. It's, it seems to me that high bar for me.
I think fifty years of employment in general is enough to be a high bar. I don't think you're gonna have too many people that dedicate fifty years to one organization, let alone the, what, forty, fifty seasons, I mean, seventy-six seasons of coaching. I think that's, I think that's combined boys and
There is a couple doubles.
But, I mean, I think this meets, in my opinion, this meets the high, pretty high bar that
Yeah.
I think is the spirit of the policy that we just talked about. So I know we're not, obviously, this isn't a action item, but I mean, I think if we're
No, I don't think we
If we're just talking, like, to me, this is
Yeah.
This is one of those high bar scenarios.
And it's, you know, unusual, right? Cause you have Traverse City Central, you have West, which West has been, what, twenty-five years?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Uh, and so, um, you know, I personally do think there's individuals that should be recognized at Traverse City Central and, um, Larry being, I mean, one of them. I mean, he's not only with his, just, I mean, everything, the fundraising, I mean, he literally, I think, hands down started the fundraising campaign for the, for the tennis courts and up until a certain point in time, which I can't remember what the date was, but that they had done all the fundraising, um, to not only install the first four courts, but then the, the second set of four courts and, um, just pure dedication to the tennis program in Traverse City, I mean, in general. So, um, let alone with TCAPs and, yeah. I think it stands for everything, our, the policy.
So I would suggest, unless anyone has any comments that, that we've kind of expressed where are likely So I would suggest, unless anyone has any comments, that, that we've kind of expressed where our likely, uh, outcome. But we still would have to wait till after the policies are done, but that would at least allow communication rather than the current okay. Like, which is to the commenter's point, that there's no, being no response because we haven't had this conversation, but. So with that, unless there's any action item, I don't think, I think that's good on there, any other comments?
We defer action to after.
I would suggest that we, we pass the policies, which we're now doing in the next meeting anyway, it also gives. I believe, like, at least a, a month public notice of our intent to at least take this up at the next meeting.
We'll ensure that it's on the board agenda for October.
Yes, that's, that's what I would ask.
Then that'll be the action.
I do have a question, um, about the cost, I mean, to just name our existing tennis center at West, would there be a significant cost?
Signage.
Yeah, but I mean, what are we talking? Hundred, just a few hundred dollars?
Depends on what you want, it could be a thousand.
Sounds a little bit more pricey nowadays.
I don't know. Actually could do, I mean, we could do a fundraiser, like a, you know, a type of community fundraiser.
But I think that's the question is, do you wanna say at that point that, you know, you would give direction, cause we have no budget for that? And we already, you know, are spending, you know, over our budget at this point with transportation, athletics, all those things.
And it, and it would not be allowed under the bond, I presume?
I think we could respond pretty quickly.
But what, what you may wanna think about in your action is doing that, and that fundraise, you know, dollars could be used. For signage for something like that, I would suggest you do that as kind of a standardized thing. You know, if you, you know, again, I don't see you doing this very often, but if you did, I would put that in there so that the district's not responsible, you know, from this.
And maybe coming back to that policy, that's.
I mean, it's a little bit of a problem even long term, right, like after, you know, plaque gets old and starts to fall apart, you know, like. You say it's something in there about the district, you know, we already have some things that have been put in about, once they age, you know, we've had to do that because. Falls apart, and then people go, oh, district, look what you've done, you know, as well as fundraised in the first place, so we've worked hard to do that, so I would suggest in a motion. That the board put some things in there like that's fundraised and, and at point of, of replacement needs, it would be expected that fundraising would be done. And it not be on the district budget to be responsible for that.
Yeah, but if we're doing that, that, just coming back, should that be in the policy of?
It's, yeah.
It would suggest that, I mean, Christie, we did, do, did some really good work with all of our memorials and those things, they have some language. To that, they're only there for a certain amount of time because of that, I could tell you, all over the district, we have these things that have been dilapidated and fallen apart. People have been long gone from when they did, and so.
I know, I'm rock, though, it's in very good shape.
You'd be shocked at even how bad rocks can, you know, get, cracked, you know, hit by a mower and things like that, and so. I would just give some caution to the board to think about that in the financial ramifications, again, not something based on the policy I expect you to do often, but when you do. I would put some primaries on that way, that way, whoever the administration in the future has been able to go, the boards intact was. And so putting that in the policy might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, another example is the Central Grade Bell, Central Grade School Bell that. Fr- fractured a couple of years ago, and it's a historic, you know. Thing that very few people can repair, it's very specialized, you know, you have a bronze statue or a plaque, you know, it, it could be costly down the road.
So I guess we would have to. I think we did have some really good language, I know you put a lot of time into the last one.
The memorial.
So I didn't have, maybe, working with, have Christine work, we can't just.
I'll work with Christine and Connie to get some language they have in there, I think, have you guys next week, would you bring those to you to give your thoughts to that, if that's what the board's.
Cause if we're gonna ask for it, I'd like the policy to say we should do, cause otherwise it, yeah, it, it should be the same for everyone.
We will provide you some language to consider.
Okay. Alright, we've got through the, uh, discussion items, uh, next item is, uh, uh, public comment number two, is there a public comment? Um, so the board has set aside this time for public comment, and individuals addressing the board shall have one opportunity to speak, and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system, and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures, including a complaint process outlined in board policy zero one six seven dot three, thanks.
Um, Ani, Dana Greensky, Indishakas, I don't know if I heard it correctly, but when you were talking about the pledge of allegiance. And changing that policy, I thought I heard that you're allowing the kids not to have to repeat it. But that they would have to stand, so I don't know if I heard that correctly, but I just wanted to encourage. The opportunity for kids to not have to participate with the pledge of allegiance. It's not, it's not something that's really normalized in some people's upbringing. And I think, you know, to be a person who grew up in this area. And has attended public schools in this area, you know, I personally have been sitting down and not. Participating since I was like in first grade, just cause, you know, I. Have understood at an ear- very early age that that wasn't for me, you know, or, or my lineage. Um, and I was, you know, faulted and. Had to, you know, have consequences in the school setting for that, and I think that we're just kind of in, an age where. You know, that shouldn't be forced onto students who don't wanna participate in that, so. If you are gonna change that, you know, um, that's very, that's, you know. I appreciate that for my own kids that, who are, you know, going to be attending TCAPs again, we're gonna give it another shot. And hopefully, this time it goes better, um, but, but yeah, I, I. I just, I think sometimes people do things for a really long time and it's not really thought of. Like, you're not really thinking about like the words that you're saying, um, and the pledge of allegiance is kind of like a form of indoctrination to. Indigenous people, you know, because you're like. Paying tribute to a flag that. Tried to erase our entire race. And you're doing it on. Our land that was stolen, so. I think sometimes, like, to hear that can help people put that in perspective, even though, you know, it's difficult to hear and. Not easily understood, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the, the closing remarks, just obviously we've added some things to the October. One of the other things on the agenda is, uh, the quarterly superintendent evaluation. Um, that's why I kind of wanted to, we are, a couple of things, one, we've got the quarterly, you are allowed to participate, this is just, uh. Obviously, as we've done previously, these are just, uh, somewhat informal usually evaluations, but we do have in December the required. Evaluation that everyone is required to have training for, and please work with Stacy, I think there was an email out with available dates virtually. And we're not doing it as a group within a board meeting, we're gonna have everyone do it in one of these prescribed, uh, meetings. I do, can you check if it is at the leadership conference, cause you don't have to right now, but, um. At some point, I don't know if, if it, if it is, so I didn't see it either, but I got told specifically it was being covered there. So I would like to know. Cause it would, it would make sense that they would have it. So, um, but we can figure that out, um, everyone has to figure it out before December, and I believe if you don't do it before December, you're not able to participate. In the evaluation, just so you, everyone knows. Um, and then that is, uh, that is it, and then, uh, we do have a lot of meetings coming up, there seems to be a lot of, uh. Other TCAPs events as well, so I do appreciate all board members for their service, I know it's gonna be a couple of extra, uh, busy months, but. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, well, those who favor say aye. Well, those opposed say nay, meeting adjourned.